Citizens of Double Oak, Town Council, Town Administration, it is now 7:00 PM. We will begin our meeting this evening. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting. For public input during citizen comment or public hearings, all speakers will be limited to three minutes each tonight. Actually, we can go back to our standard five minutes, which is actually in our ordinance. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once the channel, once on the channel, please click on the Videos tab and click on the Live button. As a reminder, per Rules of Decorum, only one person may speak at one time during council meetings. This rule will be strictly observed and enforced. No person may speak until recognized by the Mayor Pro Tem. Disrespectful personal remarks, profane language, and disorderly or distracting conduct by any person either on the Town Council or a citizen of Double Oak while in the Town Council chambers after the meeting is called to order will not be tolerated. I thank you in advance for everyone's cooperation. I would like to ask our Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy to please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Sean Redd.
Here.
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Here.
Ms. Parsons.
Here.
Ms. Hillier.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Town Council Member Scott Whizen Hunt will now lead us in an invocation.
Our heads, dear heavenly Father, we once again come together to do the town's business. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and any of your spiritual blessings that you can bestow upon us during our meeting this evening as we work the town's agenda and put our personal biases aside to do what's right for the town. Keep our first responders safe, our police firefighters, and especially the military overseas protecting our nation's interests. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Town Council Member Jean Hillier will now lead our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our flag of the free and true city of Texas, one state under God, one man and one nation.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Scott. The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except those matters that appear on the agenda. This evening, we have no one signed up for non-agenda items, so we're going to move Item three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning agenda items is available for public review. The minutes of these previous meetings have been distributed per Administrative Rules, Section 1.402 Romanate L. of Double Oak Town Ordinances, which is 72 hours prior to the scheduled time of the meeting. We now have consideration action on minutes of August 22, 2022. Are there any, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, or are there any corrections to the minutes of August 22, 2022?
I move that we approve the minutes for the August 22 meeting.
Don't we do them all as one?
Are we going to do them as all one?
That's the way the consent agenda goes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any changes that's required.
So you're waiting till?
I just wanted to, yeah, we'll do all the votes at the end. I just wanted to make sure, since there's so many of them, we need to make sure that there aren't any changes to them. So are there any corrections to September 6?
There is. And I spoke to Eileen earlier because the presentation I did on the DOPD was not included, so I moved to make a motion to approve the nine six minutes amended with the addition of my PowerPoint presentation.
Actually, it should be corrected. Yeah. Not amended, corrected.
Oh.
I move to make a motion to approve the nine six minutes corrected with the addition of my PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Do we have a second on the correction?
I second.
All right. Again, I'm going to continue down. September 19, 2022, any corrections to the minutes?
I have two. I spoke to Eileen about those earlier today. On item number 11, which was discussion, consideration, and action on the Safe Belt vendor in comparison to the contract with Steve Kohler, it shows as a move to table the discussion, that move was actually to postpone. There's a difference. And then on item 14, discussion, consideration, and action on salary ranges within the Double Oak Police Department. The second sentence reads, "Councilmember Hillier commented she does not believe the increases the Chief has proposed will get us in the middle of the salary ranges of other agencies, and it should omit not," because I said I went back and looked at the video, I do believe. So those two corrections. So I move that we accept those two corrections to the minutes for the August, September 19 meeting.
Second. Second. Thank you. And the September 22, 2022. Any corrections to the minutes? No corrections, council? So is there a motion to approve all of the meeting minutes of this 22nd, the 6th, the 19th, and the 22nd? We've had two seconds on the 6th and the 19th. Are we ready to move forward with a vote?
Well, we've made separate motions, so now we need to vote on each motion separately, which isn't a big deal, I just wanted to make sure it's right.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, August 22, 2022?
I move that we approve the meetings of August 22, 2022.
We call vote?
On which one?
August 22, 2022.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Sean Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
The approval passes. We now have a motion on September 2, 2022 with corrected information. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
And we had a second, so we can go ahead and move to vote on September 6?
So we already made the motions?
Yeah, and a second. Correct. We just need a vote.
Here we go. Okay, Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Sean Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Aye.
We have approved the minutes for September 19. And the last consent agenda item is for the September 22, 2022 minutes. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as written for September 22, 2022.
Second.
We have a vote, please?
Mr. Whizen Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Sean Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Sean Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye. So all of the consent agenda items have now passed. Item number four, Mayor, Council Members, and Staff Reports. Council and Mayor, any comments or anything to report?
I just want to say thank you for those who wished me well while I was sick with COVID. Been there, done that, I'm ready to move on. Sorry I missed the meetings, but was very glad to stay engaged from home, so thank you, Brian, for keeping us on Zoom. I realize it's an expense to the town, but the transparency for our government is priceless. By the way, the podium placement was not a problem from my view on the camera. When it was moved back and forth, I had clear vision on the camera, but we might want to put a marker on the floor for podium placement if it happens again. Appreciate you getting all the minutes caught up today, Eileen. It is in our Section 1.403 ordinance that they should be ready and available for approval at the following meeting, so I'm glad we got that called, caught up. I want to commend the council on their efforts to meet the no new rev rate and satisfy the DOPD budget request. I agree it was the right action to take, and it's a win for the community as a whole. What it was not proud to see during the meetings, though, was the rude behavior of fellow council persons in the Treasury. Ms. Parsons called the citizens a peanut gallery. Mr. Whizen Hunt raised marks to somebody he should or should not have shook her head. I don't know who it was, because I couldn't see that part of the audience. Ms. Garrett told the citizen to be quiet, it's time to listen to me now. I was offended for these residents. You get a different perspective when you're watching it on TV. So it was a public hearing. That's the opportunity for citizens to speak their concerns and comments, so they may or may not agree with council, but it is the point of the public hearing to listen to them. That same disrespectful behavior I saw last year's public hearing, which has prompted me to run for office. So the rude behavior towards the citizens of this town needs to stop, and those that you have behaved in that manner should apologize to the citizens. Lastly, we serve at the pleasure of the citizens of this town. Once again, council demonstrates that they just didn't want to listen to their constituents. The town employees have benefited very well from this council. Been collecting those notes for a couple weeks.
So I also have some comments. I already came prepared tonight to say my apologies for losing my temper whenever the citizens were speaking out of turn during our meeting and interrupting the council discussion. Two wrongs don't make a right. I shouldn't have lost my temper. I try to live my life, loving others, showing kindness and respect towards others, and I was very frustrated the other night whenever there were repeated outbursts from the audience when it was the council's turn to speak after the citizens had already had time to speak. In the future, I will call on the Mayor Pro Tem or the mayor, whoever is in the role, to take control of that, as he stated at the beginning, and I appreciate him saying that at the beginning because that's no way to do business either for the citizens or for the council or for the town staff.
Correct.
We need to move on from that. As I said, I apologize for losing my temper, and I hope you accept my apology for that. I'm not proud of the way that evening went during the budget discussion. Tensions ran high for everyone, and it's been a tense time ever since the change in council, even council interrupting council. I know before we had these videos going, I had to speak up a lot and say, please stop interrupting me, and so just wanted to say that we need to move on and try to work together as a council and as a town for what is the best entry of this town.
Thank you. Other council?
I have a couple of quick comments. The Technology Committee met last Thursday, and I joined Brian, our technology and Assistant Court Clerk, and our DataMax representative, Richard, to review what's gone on the last quarter, and I'm happy to admit that Brian and DataMax have kept us in good shape, and I'm looking forward to continuing that. After Richard left, Brian and I had a fairly brief conversation about some impending IT projects that are going to be teed up to the Town Council for decisions, so we'll be working on those, and as time and opportunity permit, we'll, those will come forward for the council to make decisions on. Some of them have been discussed, but now that we're in the new budget year, some things can wait, and some will need action fairly quickly, so just heads up on that. One other thing, because I have an ongoing interest in what's going on in the police world, serendipitously, I noticed that the town of Bartonville is hiring a patrol officer. So it looks like, even though I thought at the last meeting when Jill Glover asked if they were fully staffed, apparently they're adding a position. Salary range is 57,000 to 70,000 with a $1,500 sign-on bonus, so it's kind of brain-bending in a way, but sort of not surprising. And then there was an article in the Wall Street Journal over the weekend that I sent to Chief Rivas, but I could share, well, or you can go look it up. There are some cities out there so desperate for police officers that mention was made. Just one example that really made my head spin was that they're actually offering a $40,000 signing bonus just to get people to apply. So it continues to remind me at least that this isn't just a local problem, it's nationwide. So I think that the decision we made on the budget to fund our PD is, was the right thing to do.
Other reports from council? I would like to thank the council for the hard work that they did with the budget, and there was give and take throughout. It was contentious at times, but I think in the end, most everyone got what they needed, required, or wanted. The citizens got a no new revenue rate, which I know for those that are over 65 with our new tax freeze is very important to those folks. I've heard from many of them thanking the council on the work that they did to get to the no new revenue rate, because that helps freeze them where they're at. Obviously, we had the great opportunity to take our police department budget and move it from the bottom to above the median. Now it's just up to the chief to fill the ranks, and I know that you've got a staffing schedule, so once you get the bodies, you'll have the staffing report so we can meet the 24-hour that the citizens were asking for. So I think in general, it was, although it wasn't fun at times, we were able to accomplish this for the town and for the citizens, and I thank the council for making that happen. Anything else? Moving on to number six of four, Public Works reports?
Actually do. We recently completed the project for the crack seal, so as usual, visual.
The whole list of what was on there for crack seal?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So that means we get to add a whole bunch more this time around. I apologize for the delay.
Wow.
That's one.
How did we steal that one?
That's your five-second vacation.
We're going to need more funds.
Well, it's being funny. Okay, anyways, we'll just use this for now, but so Ridge Briar Lane and Trailing Oaks was completed. They actually did seal all the cracks that were out at the location, as well as at Meadow Knoll. Let me go back to the beginning, apparently it started at the back one. Okay, there we go. All right. So at North Woodland Trail, they did complete all the crack seals there on both sides of King's Road. They did go to both portions of that, as well as all of Green Ridge Drive. As you can see in the photo down here, they actually sealed quite a bit of it. The same thing occurred at Shady Hill Lane, which is adjacent to Green Briar as well. And also, we did complete at South Woodland Trail all the way over to Oak Grove Circle as well in that location. One thing I will state, though, is when you go out, if you do see a lot of alligator cracking, which basically looks like a lot of tiny squares, if you have large portions of that, they do not crack seal those locations because it's redundant due to the fact that that actually needs to be torn out and done over again. So if you do see some on those roads, please note that they didn't miss that, and they didn't make any errors that those large sections are because they actually just, they actually need a, they need a repair, a milling overlay in those sections. So I just wanted to make note of that. If you are going out and looking, they didn't miss anything, that it's actually, they did complete the work, so the rest of the updates will be further in the, further in the meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you, Randall.
My pleasure.
Anything on code enforcement?
That's still ticking as normal. We don't get a huge, huge amount of those, but we have had some high grass and weeds that have come up, and a little bit of, a little bit of outside storage, but not much outside of that.
How about our home project down at the corner of Kings and?
Yeah, so that one's been fun. They actually finally pulled the permits. They got, they actually had to pay an astronomical fee per ordinance because they were red-tagged, so they finally paid everything. There are some up and coming projects for that location. They're wanting to consider replating a portion of it, one acre, for future development, but they have finally pulled all the permits. It was a very long process, let's just say that, with someone who has not done it before for the general contractor, but they worked steadily with us, and we were able to get the fees and get everything in, so we are now started on that process, so we should start seeing improvement over the next several weeks.
Thank you for that.
Good job on that.
Anything from Animal Control?
The report was in the agenda packet.
Moving on to item seven of number four, Administration?
The, I put the balance sheet and the profit and loss statement in your packet. If you have any questions, just let me know. And of course, this is not a final one, because I'm still paying stuff from last fiscal year.
Public Safety?
Yes, sir. You have my report for last month in CID cases and our call for service report. Also, just want to let you know that we have received 13 resumes for police officer position and six resumes that don't qualify for, to work for us. Want to thank Chief Nack with Elm Ridge Police Department. He's offered to do the background checks on individuals to help us out, and for short, on manpower, but his detectives are going to be handling those, those ones that we can't do ourselves. Also, just to let you all know, tomorrow's National Night Out, 5:30 to 7:30. Welcome to come out, bring your kiddos. We'll have a lot of treats and snacks and police here to visit.
Chief, that's a lot of resumes. What were your sources? What was your best headhunting tool that you used?
Our website, our website, we got a lot of them that turned it in through our website. Indeed was, wasn't very good for us. It would, indeed would just send us, and different people who didn't even qualify for other positions and stuff, so that cost us about $500, and we shut it down because they weren't giving us good applicants, so it was a website.
So updates to the website in terms of the salary and just a little more descriptive information?
Yes, ma'am.
Made a difference? Thank you.
Well, I didn't want to let, you know, I looked at Indeed tonight, and it was four days ago, the salary range on that was still 47, 988 to 55, 66. I'm sorry, that's denton. 57,000 to 57,135 was on Indeed. And then Glass Door, we still have an ad out there, still shows 57,000.
We don't use Glass Door. I think they just.
So are they ads or reports?
They're ads, because I just Googled PD, Double PD hiring, and it came up with those sources.
I just mean the way those websites work, I don't think it's actually advertisements. Sometimes it's, they take the information they gather and they.
They scrape it.
Yeah, they scrape it, is the word.
Yeah, they scrape it and repost it.
And maybe it looks like an advertisement, although he's not putting that out there.
And I don't know.
It's hard to control that information.
Yeah. Okay, and the TML is not out there at all?
Let me get with Assistant Chief Gaines.
I mean, 16's great, filtering in those. I was just curious as to what you were using and what we were showing.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Anything from Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department?
I don't know, we gave a report last night.
Yep, it was great too, by the way.
Oh, well.
Can you please? Or no?
I can't, I can speak to it. If you notice, the, there is a Boy Scout project going on out front, so they got a nice split rail fence that looks really good, and they're going to finish putting the decomposed granite down, but so far it looks very nice.
It looks great. They were working hard out there on Saturday.
Yeah, that's Gavin Ward.
Yes, Gavin Ward, yep, and about three or four firefighters are out there helping too.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin Ward.
Well, that completes the items of four, Mayor, Council, and Member Staff Reports. The next portion of, is the agenda items, item five. We do have three folks who want to talk on specific agenda items. I've notated your names, and we'll have you come up and speak at the beginning of each agenda item, and please, if you can get your comments all out at once versus coming back and forth to the podium, but if we have to call you up for a question, we'll do so, but we'd really like to keep it to the, the agenda item and then in your first response. Under item 10, Discussion and Consideration for the Acknowledgement and Receipt of the Second Tranche Distribution of $380,854.85 of the SLFRF Fund. Add to the balance sheet these funds and review the updated report from the independent accounting firm. We do have Jill Glover that referenced this as an agenda item. Okay, all right. No, that's fine, I'll just write you down for 11 then. So what we're, weeks back, when all of the SLFRF became uncovered, there was a lot of question as to who knew what about the funds and what they were to be used for, and so this item was put on here to basically communicate to the town that we have collected the second tranche of funds in the form of the 380,000. They have been added to the balance sheet. It has been notated through the public record of tonight that the Town Council and the citizens know this money has been distributed and has been deposited into the, to the proper fund, and the, which is part of the packet, the Independent Accountant's Report on applying the two pieces of A, in regards to the TMRS, the retirement fund of the six folks who were legal to get the premium pay, that that is legal, it's been noted in the report, as well as noted in the report is that a response to adding or writing a letter to the federal government from the town asking for forgiveness for the error that was made in judgment, and we will address those items today. So are there other, other comments from the council as it relates to the item? We wanted to make sure that it's publicly clear that everyone here knows the commitment that we all made weeks ago was that we will be spending these funds 100% correctly, and I know this council will absolutely do that. Lessons learned from the past, we're going to do the best thing with these funds for the most amount for the town, and we look forward to bringing these items up at future meetings and how we would look to utilize the funds to improve the town. Any questions or other comments from the council?
I just, Eileen, if you could explain that on the, so the amount deposited was 380, $854.85. The balance sheet as of September 30 reflects 375,775.15. Could you just explain for us the difference?
I'm thinking that I, I don't.
I'm thinking that I, I don't want to say because I would need to go back and look at QuickBooks to see exactly what was, uh, paid out of that fund.
Okay, so you can bring us up to speed at the next meeting?
Sure.
And then obviously who, who would approve those as well? I think we've got to, we're trying, basically folks, we're trying to put this thing to bed. And in doing so, we want to make sure that every penny is accounted for. And again, the, the account, independent accountant's report has been amended. He did a nice job. He absolutely covered exactly what we had requested, um, councilperson Parsons. So we're in good shape with the report.
I think so. We'll have to see depending on what the outcome is with the other three, um, on the pension piece. Because that will, there will possibly be some changes there depending on what happens with that.
Okay. Nope, I get it, thank you. So moving on to item eleven, discussion and consideration of the pending issue of S L F distribution to the non-qualified employees to include town council votes on. So is you're aware of, excuse me one second, Ms. Glover. So you're aware that our town attorney was here, we had an executive session, the town attorney spoke, that there were three options as it relates to the town, what the town, what the action can take from the council and the town as it relates to the recovery of the funds for the three individuals. And tonight what we're going to do is we're going to vote on each of those so we can continue to move forward and get this behind us. So now I'll go ahead and ask for the, um, Jill Glover to come up. And I apologize for getting in the way there.
No worries. Jill Glover, one seventy, Double Oaks Drive. I just have a couple of comments and I would like to actually begin with a quote from John Adams. Because we have no government armed with power capable of contending with human passions unbridled by morality and religion. Averis ambition, revenge, or gallantry would break the strongest cords of our constitution as a whale goes through a net. Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other. I would just like to remind the council that your job is to serve the citizens. As you think about what to do with the options for the pending issue of the S L F R F distribution, I just want you to please do what is right and what is moral. The previous mayor has put us in a horrible position. It is absolutely horrible, but as has been previously noted, two wrongs do not make a right. So please think about that. And again, you serve the citizens. It is an honor to be in elected office. Thank you.
Thank you. So item number eleven, four eleven, number one, discussion, consideration, and action. A formal request to the town council on behalf of the citizens to request the three ineligible employees pay the funds back. Town council, open up for discussion.
Well, I think, okay, we're discussing number one of the three.
Number one.
Okay, so, um, our town attorney made it pretty clear at the last meeting. And, and I had raised an issue previously about, um, asking for payment back or requiring payment back, either one. That it's a very sticky situation because it could be construed as garnishment of wages. And he had, he advised us that there was, that was not a smart legal move at all.
But did he say that you couldn't ask for it back?
No, he said you can ask for it back, but then you get a very tricky situation as well. Because what happens with, if one gives it back or two give it back and the other doesn't, or people don't have the money because the money has been spent, um, so you get into a sticky situation there as well.
Yes, I mean, the, the whole thing is a sticky situation.
Well, my comments have, we've been transparent through this whole investigation. The citizens know three people, um, received funds and were ineligible. Those three employees know they received funds and were ineligible. Um, so, and the mayor resigned over his erroneous decision. He acted outskied his scope of authority from what we understand. So, and as been previously stated, two wrongs don't make a right. It's against the type A general law town that we are for financial decisions to occur outside town council. And that's what happened. And everybody was witness to it. So I think it's appropriate, actually, that we do formally request the town, the employees to return the funds, um, however they can. Uh, because they've known for quite a while now that they were ineligible to receive them. And that's really the facts.
On the other, other hand, the employees were the recipients and are not at fault. I think we've done a lot of finger pointing at the wrong people. It, it was the mayor's decision and the former mayor's decision. And he owned up to that and resigned. And I, I think that, I, I believe that continuing to drag town employees through the mud is inappropriate and doesn't, doesn't resolve the problem. And especially when you say three, but then there are the others and they were eligible, but they're not. Again, it's not the employees' fault. So let's stop hanging that noose around their necks, um, and move on.
So, uh, uh, agreed. You said two wrongs don't make a right and a wrong was the decision by the mayor and another wrong is to try to get the money back from the employees. The, um, they, the facts, let, let's separate the opinion from the facts. I don't think anybody in here agrees with how the funds were spent. I can speak personally that the fire department had a lot of money tied up in extra equipment and stuff we had to order that we were kind of hoping to get a little reimbursement for. So had it gone to town council, I, that would have been one of the things I would have asked for. So agree with how the money's spent? No. But it's, people keep saying fact, it was not a legitimate expense. It is a legitimate expense. We just need to write the justification. So if an employee receives a perfectly legal dis, disbursement of money, I can't see in good conscience asking him to pay it back. And if one does and the other doesn't, that's just going to cause a rift between the people in the town and those employees. It's, there's nothing to be gained just to ask for the dollars back.
Council, any other further discussion?
I'd just like to clarify, there's no finger pointing here. There's no name-calling of, uh, employees. It was not a legitimate expenditure. It should have come through council. Council was aware that the funds came through. How the previous mayor got away with doing what he did is still baffling. But I think this goes to morality and to character. And I still stand with asking to request the money back from the ineligible employees.
And on that?
Go ahead.
On that, I'd also like to defend the employees. There has been a lot of finger pointing. Specifically, I would point back to the presentation by the mayor pro tem and the deputy mayor pro tem multiple times to cite ethics violations and, um, speak poorly about our staff. And so I do feel like that was finger pointing. And I'm glad that my name was not on that document.
So I have no problem with what was put on the document. Um, there is an ethics violation to sign a check to yourself, especially to those levels of money and that there wasn't due diligence done on the behalf of the town, the citizens, and council.
You might want to do your homework. Eileen did not sign her check to herself.
It's so-
Our assistant town secretary did. So you really need to get, get the facts straight, especially in a public forum.
Noted.
It, it helps if you actually ask the people as opposed to making assumptions and putting them in, in, um, public presentations.
And while what the mayor did may not have been a legitimate use of the funds or way of issuing the funds, let's put it that way. The employees receiving the funds was not an illegitimate, illegitimate use of the funds. So let's separate the facts again and make sure that we understand what we're truly voting on here is, is the degradation in employees. And I agree with Casey. The, the, the presentation was a direct attack on the employees.
Since, obviously as mayor pro tem, it's difficult for me to put an opinion in here, but since this was brought up, and at that moment in time, I was actually the mayor pro tem on the council. I stand by everything I put in the report because I did the homework. I went out, we did the research on how the funds were supposed to be used and were not supposed to be used. And it, they, it did not, they did not qualify for the premium pay. Had the mayor, the treasurer, and that town council done their homework, they would have known that those three employees would not have been eligible to do this. I stand by my presentation.
Remember that too, I- Excuse me, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you threw the town council in there as though we had something to do with those payments and we did not. So I'd like to clarify that again.
Well, unfortunately-
The town council, I wasn't finished with my sentence, thank you. The town council was not in any way aware of what was going on. And that has been clearly stated. We were directly asked that question. Scott and I both answered that and so did Billy, even though she wasn't on the council anymore, came up and said she had no idea either. So please don't throw the council in there in that statement as though we didn't do our homework. We weren't aware of what was going on.
I stand by my presentation.
As I do.
Is there any further discussion, council? Do we have a motion to vote?
Are we going to just, since all three of these are under one item, are we going to discuss all three? And then, then have motions or are we going to discuss or vote on each one?
Vote on each one.
Okay, because I asked our town attorney this morning by email and he said that we should, it was certainly within reason, but your decision on how we decided to do that. So we're going to do these individually.
Correct.
Okay.
Was there a motion?
I'm getting my wording. I move to make a motion to make a formal request to the town council on behalf of the citizens to request the three ineligible employees pay the, back the funds.
Do we have a second? We have no second? The item is tabled?
No. The motion does-
The motion, the motion fails, sorry. Item number two of eleven, discussion, consideration, and action to apply for justification waiver from the treasury department that could provide relief to the town without penalty or payback. Town council, is there further discussion?
So I support this position. I think we have every right and our employees have the right to, um, a justification waiver based on the roles that they perform in our small town. They don't, they didn't have the option during COVID of staying home. They didn't have the option of staying away from maybe some of the employees that were deemed eligible for these payments that were more exposed than them and those sorts of things. And so in my mind, I view our employees, our town staff, all the same in their exposure, their, their willingness to come in and keep our town running. I appreciate everything they did when the rest of us were staying at home. And, um, so I would, I would like to see the town apply for the justification waiver from the treasury department.
And since we want to make sure facts are checked, please go back to the police records that reflect that the calls were about half during that time period and that the town staff employees were working out of their home for a couple of months during that pay period when the premium play, uh, qualified.
I believe in a prior meeting, former mayor Mike Donnelly came up and talked about how the employees were coming in and out and they even staggered their terms to where maybe they came in different days or they would take different weeks. Um, but that was stated here. And also, I do understand that police call volumes were down. That doesn't mean that you don't want pitch police on site and patrolling your town. That's my opinion. And I think we've heard strongly from the citizens that they want twenty-four seven patrol. And so I think everyone was thankful for that during that time.
Other, other discussion?
The town hall was closed for a period of time.
Do we have a motion?
I would just ask who would write that justification waiver letter?
So we actually discussed this, um, when you were out, that the letter would come from the mayor or the mayor pro tem. Um, that was discussed in the meeting with the, with Berman, the special session. Um, no, what's it called? Executive session, thank you. The executive session, we did discuss that. And it would come from the town, but being written by the mayor or mayor pro tem.
Also, um, our town attorney did volunteer that he would participate in creation of that letter. But it would go out of the signature of the mayor or the mayor pro tem, depending on who, who was in office at the time. That, if that was a decision that was made by the town council.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we apply for a justification waiver from the treasury department that could provide relief to the town without penalty or payback.
Do we have a second?
I second.
I'd like to ask our town secretary, Eileen Kennedy, to please call a vote.
Ms. Shawn Redd?
No.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Wizenhunt?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No. The item number two passes on the discussion, consideration, and action to apply for justification waiver from the town treasury department that could provide relief to the town without penalty or payback. We will begin the process of that letter being written, uh, by legal and, uh, who signs it will be determined in the future. Item number three, discussion, consideration, and action to use balance funds from the Double Oak balance sheet and repay the S L F R F fund from the town's general fund or other sources lawfully available. Town council, is there any discussion?
Yes, I, I don't agree with moving funds from general balance funds on the balance sheet to pay, to repay the S L F R F funds from the town's general fund. Whether we agree with, with the use of the payments or not, I think if that is done, you're taking funds that are basically unrestricted, yet the council decides where we get to use them, the ones that are sitting on the general fund right now. And if you move them to the S L F R F funds, you're highly restricted on the use and the reporting of those funds. What's done is done. And so I say we just leave the money where it is. And if, once we write the waiver, the justification waivers that we just voted on, then those funds that were used there will be allowed as S L F R F funds. And I believe this point was to try and fix that. And I just, I disagree with you because you're taking unrestricted funds and putting them in a very restricted account.
So if, if the treasury letter fails to pass and we go to April and have to report out on how we use the funds, we would then be in neglect or a misuse of funds on the seventy-five thousand plus the T M R S. So are we then going to file a false report that states that we use them okay, even though we were told we didn't? Or, or how are we going to refund that money back into the S L F R F account? That's, that's all this, this one's about.
So based on what Mr. Berman said, um, he, he opined on the position that no, we would not be in any poor situation by leaving it where it is if we file the, um, justification waivers and file the report as such. He also saw where there is no real way that the treasury has shown that they will reject the justification waivers and, and share that with us. Um, so I don't think we're at any risk there. I think also typically the way those things work with the government, if they come back and change the plans, then you usually can make an amendment.
So I think he, you're, that's close to what he said. He said, let's get the justification letters. If we get the justification letters out soon, November, December, and they for some reason reject them, then we could come back to the table and issue this, um, vote. Um, that's why we should probably let this one just table, postpone, however you want to look at it, and not vote on it tonight. And that way, it's, it's an available option for us.
We could postpone it for a future meeting should the need arise.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
If you want to do that, we can do that.
Yeah.
So what kind of action? So what kind of action would you like to take, council?
I would move that we postpone item number three, discussion, consideration and action to use, or actually action to use the balance funds from the double balance sheet and repay the SL F R F fund from the town council's general fund or other sources lawfully available. To a future meeting, should the treasury reject our justification letter for the three exempt employees.
Say it. Item is postponed.
Well, she, we most, we need a vote, she made him.
Okay, yeah. So we need to move to a vote?
Yes, sir.
Town secretary?
Just a second.
Scott did.
Scott did.
Okay, Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizenhun.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Shawn Redd.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
The agenda item number eleven, number three, discussion, consideration, action to use balance funds from the double balance sheet and repay the SL F R F fund from the town's general fund or other sources lawfully available has been postponed. Item number twelve, moving on item twelve. Discussion, consideration and action on the drainage adjustment on Park Lane at Shady Hill Lane, we do have a, Mr. David White. Please come to the podium.
Hi, I'm David White at two forty Shady Hill Lane. And I actually have two things, one is from a previous discussion, somebody quoted John Adams. And I know the council knows, I don't know if the townspeople know, that the council and the mayor have a fiduciary responsibility to the town first. Regardless of what the citizens want, if it goes against the laws or ordinances of the town or of the state. So the town has to act in the best interest of the town, no matter what the citizens want, if it's not legal. Now sometimes you don't like to hear that, if you have something zoned.
Yep.
And it's zoned accordingly and somebody wants to come in and build that fits that zone zoning, you can't deny them.
Right, right.
Or you'll be sued.
Right, yeah.
So it's just, this is not for y'all, it's for the townspeople.
Right.
Now, the second part.
You you're on town council for how many years?
Uh, two terms.
Two terms, four years, yeah.
So the 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 second part is the uh, this presentation that's going to be going on for the drainage but on Shady Hill and Park Lane. I'm the reason that that presentation is going on and I'm disappointed that I wasn't notified that it was on the agenda for tonight. I had to find out from a neighbor that says, what's going on, what's what's going on at the corner of Shady Hill and Park? I've just, I had expected since I had given the presentation and y'all reverted it back to the town engineer for a further investigation that I might be notified when it came up for a vote. So I'm just disappointed in that, that's all I wanted to say.
In response to that, we had, we had some recommendations from one of the town council members as it relates to how agendas have have worked and and reworked. And when the agenda was put together for this week, we had taken, there was a lot of old agenda items that had been out there that had not been acted upon or put onto future agendas. And those items were all added on to this agenda for tonight's meeting and and that's how it ended up on there. I know that's, that's not an excuse, it's not an answer, I'm just kind of explaining what it is that that took place in order for this to be on the item tonight.
Okay, well, I I just, I wanted to voice my, I don't, wouldn't call it displeasure, but disappointment. Uh, because the last meeting I was here at, y'all were discussing communication with the townspeople on certain items, so it's just.
Oh, you should, we apologize and you should have been notified.
That's okay, thank you.
I take ownership of that one. I could have come to your house and told you that, so I apologize. Thank you for bringing that forward.
We have a presentation by Randall Anglin?
Yes, sir. That's confirmation, we have a second. Okay, this thing is acting up tonight, so. I apologize for there, I don't know what's going on with it, but anyways, we'll just go from this standpoint. So I apologize if it's not as large as it usually is. So it, so at Park Lane and Shady Hill Lane, of course, as previously brought up this afternoon, at two forty Shady Hill, the concern was brought forward by our town engineer, half associates. Indicating that the project which was approved for the Millen overlay of a portion of Shady Hill approach off of Park Lane and then all of Park Lane. Uh, had some concerns due to the drainage channel on the side of the property at two forty Shady Hill facing west. The issue that was brought forward was concerning the actual drainage meeting, the proper grade in order to put the road back. And whether or not it would end up causing issues in the very near future after the project was done, because it would slough off because it didn't meet the current grade that it needed to be and then also the stabilization in that area. So as it was brought forward, uh, half engineering did bring forward their their proposal, we did reach out and requested a couple of companies to bring forward their best as far as pricing. Uh, in the wake of what the owner had brought forward, which was possibly underground with the R C P concrete. Uh, we also, they also sent in a proposal for plastic A D S and then also above ground exposed flagstone and concrete flume. The prices from land's construction as seen above were for sixteen thousand for the concrete flume, flagstone at eighteen thousand. The underground eighteen inch R C P concrete pipe buried underneath and then graded, uh, graded on top as an even surface would be at seventeen thousand. And then underground with plastic A D S would, at eighteen inch pipe would be at fifteen thousand. Half associates?
Sorry, Randall, can you just go back one slide and just help me understand again, I know we talked about it, but the concrete flume is like, is that where it kind of?
Yes, ma'am.
Bundles through, okay.
Absolutely.
And on the the underground concrete and the underground plastic, then the the ground would be filled in overhead with grass and such after, I mean, like it would, to grow over that culvert essentially, kind of.
Absolutely, so the same as you see in the the culvert that's underneath the road in this photo. So the pipe would be extended, this is actually R C P, this is concrete pipe that's right here. Uh, it would be extended all the way out from Shady Hill all the way to the driveway. So it would connect in the full length and would be concrete pipe and then it would be compacted and covered up and then sodded. That's what the underground eighteen inch R C P and the underground plastic A D S is both referring to when it's talking about underground. The rest would be left open, so the concrete flume being the sidewalls concreted and then also the flagstone is the other option.
I'm probably jumping ahead, but it occurs to me that either of the underground options would potentially mess with the tree roots and could, over time, cause it to die. I mean, a lot of times when you change the grade significantly like that, it impacts the health of the tree. Just, I don't know if you've looked at that or not, but be worth considering.
Absolutely. There are some air roots that are there, there's not a lot of exposure to the root system that's there, but it, I can't say whether or not if it would have any impact at this time without actually having it looked at, so I won't comment on that part, but it is a good point. Half associates initially gave us the pricing, so I'll just cover that. Half associates stated their plans, contracts and specifications, along with the inspections for a channel would be forty-five hundred and this is just the inspection portion, this is not the price to actually install anything, just really wanted to make that known. The other was plans and contract specifications with inspection with the storm drain system installed would be at eighty-three hundred. Again, this is just the plans, contracts, specifications and the, that portion of it. When it comes to installing the types of material, separate price, again, half associates stated that the crowded rip, uh, rock rip wrap, which was originally stated, which was not a fan favorite, was twenty-one thousand. The four inch concrete paving, again, open face, open to the air, so it would be the open concrete design was at thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight. Crowded flagstone was also open, uh, and this is not the full extent on half's associates, this is just the damaged section going from the culvert entry at Shady Hill up through the damaged section to support that area and then it would stop. So they wouldn't go the full length all the way to the property owner's pipe. The only ones that are being considered for that are the buried, are when you get down to the R C P buried underneath the ground and then grading over it. So underground is the only one where it would connect from from the culvert at Shady Hill all the way to the private property owner's, uh, actual entryway underneath their driveway to the culvert that they actually have. Uh, that's where this eighteen inch R C P quoted at nineteen thousand was included. So the following four price tags would include, would include the initial price, which would be the eighty-three hundred for underground and then the forty-five hundred for the open face. So you'd have to tack that on, so it gets pretty expensive pretty fast. Ultimately. Not, I'm just gonna tell you staff's recommendation, it is not town, it is not typical town policy, which is to go out and to ultimately go into private property, we actually have no right of way in this area. So we would ultimately, I would caution, just because it would set the precedence, that if we do improve this area and do this, we would have to negotiate with the owner and get them to sign off on it. And there would be some possible liability as far as us maintaining that area. And then also in the future, if we had something that occurred very similar to this, then the town would be responsible, would look at possibly those being presented and be requested as to that being done at their property. Which I would completely understand if we, if it was decided by council to move forward in this facet. What I can tell you is we were approved for the road project improvements, that does include the price of stabilizing this area, putting the grade back at what it's supposed to be in that section and then sodding it. And then the, then it would fall to the owner to maintain that area that has been sodded and the dirt, that basically this section that falls right in here, which they would go back and they would put the grass back and then the owner would be responsible for that thereafter. So, and that would be at no cost outside of what's already been approved by council to repair the road. So that would be my recommendation as far as expenditure goes, but again, that ultimately y'all decide whether or not if we want to improve that area outside of that.
Okay, I just, the question I had then, cuz this whole thing started with the recommendation of the rip wrap, didn't it? Which was twenty-one thousand dollars.
That was a, so, that was something that was brought forward by half associates, I just wanted to make y'all aware that that was a possible solution. It wasn't to say, hey, this is what you need to do, I just had to make sure that y'all are aware of it cuz half associates had brought it to our attention.
Okay, I get it, so they're saying, they recommended we do something, they recommended the rip wrap. If we don't do anything, the plan is repair the road, regrade it, sod it, leave it alone.
So they would build the area of the embankment, the same, not at the exact same grade it is right now, according to what it needs to be at, so they would compact that area, they would expose that area, they would compact it at the appropriate grade levels. And then they would sod it at what it's supposed to be at so that it's able to stably hold the road where it's supposed to be at. So it wouldn't go back exactly like it is, it would go back the way that it's supposed to be in the first place. It's just eroded out because the fact that there is nothing holding that soil there.
Yeah.
And it's shaded.
The trees, the, the dappled lights are gonna kill any grass.
Again, I previously, you know, stated, you know, the homeowner does an immaculate job of maintaining the lawn, it's one of the most beautiful lawns in the area with the St. Augustine grass that he has. And I don't know how he gets it to hold in the shaded areas, but that's what he would be left with ultimately. At the end of the day, on his portion of property that he owns, because the right of way is out to the middle of the road. In this case, the owner owns out to the middle of the road. However, the town does hold the responsibility of maintaining the road itself.
Yes.
Or any culverts that cross underneath the road, but the natural drainage channels that fall underneath any one particular person's property, after reviewing it, in most cases, it falls to the property owner, in this case it does.
Yeah, okay.
On either side of his ditch, do any of the solutions create an obstruction to the water flow? Should you do any of the underground options or something from the neighbor on the other side of Shady Hill? And then the one down here on the side, any, any proposals have negative impacts to either of those sides?
No, ultimately this is downhill, so it, the the water flows from uphill here and cuts through this area. And then it go, then he has a private driveway that goes into, uh, goes into the owner's, uh, actual garage, which is off of Park Lane. And ultimately, he has a, uh, he has a culvert that goes underneath his driveway and then the water travels further south, going towards King's Road. Essentially, this is the, uh, this is on the way towards King's Road at this point, where the water travels down, going towards the south.
Mr. White, do you have a problem with grass? Do you have a problem with grass?
Grass, no.
Okay. You just didn't want the rip wrap.
That's correct, I didn't want the rip wrap and the company that suggested the rip wrap, I think if you look at it, it's the most expensive option.
Yeah, I know, I saw that.
So, uh, and the, the other thing you might wanna consider, I don't believe the tree roots, uh, because they're on the, looking at this picture, they're on the right side. That I don't think they go down underneath the ditch. So if you were to fill it in, I don't think it would cause a problem, if it did, there's only two trees, maybe three trees that might die and I don't have a problem with that if I can get the pipe in. And also consider the safety factor, cuz it's about four feet deep right there at the, uh.
Correct.
At the corner. And there's already been a, if you, I don't know if you can zoom in, but there's a corner of that, uh, uh, concrete pipe coming out that somebody backed up and backed down and busted off a piece of it, I don't know how they got out.
Well, I remember, I remember we discussed the safety factor too and I have a deep ditch too, so. That's not gonna play pleasant for anybody going on the road.
You talk of the difference between the R C P and the, uh, A D S pipe, I know Flower Mountain uses A D S pipe in a lot of their, uh, constructions, so. It's good stuff.
Since this is your property, did you have a preference to any of the considerations that were brought forward tonight?
Yeah, bury the, I'd like to see the whole thing buried. So I can, uh, put us, put my sprinklers out to the edge of the road, uh, maintain the grass. I don't have a problem with the grass growing, the reason I can't get grass to grow there is because I don't have, I don't have the sprinklers all the way up to the edge of the road cuz the edge of the road is at a sixty degree angle, there's nothing to bury them into. And, uh, the St. Augustine takes five hours of sunlight a day, it gets five hours of sunlight.
Okay. Well, I think the grading might help if it's graded not so steep.
But where do you grade it to?
Well, so that's, that's kind of the question, so that you you asked the the follow on question I just had to, and it's to to Randall. I'm, 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 I'm with you on the recommendation, um, I don't want to cite a precedence, but if there is indeed a drainage issue that we would need to address. Or if us just putting a grading in would cause a drainage issue, kind of following up on Connie's question, then I would want to consider the other options, some of the other options like burying it, right? But if the grading's okay and we're not going to introduce a new drainage issue and the homeowner's happy with the grass, then I say we just move forward with the the grass.
So I can tell you that the issue in itself is not necessarily a drainage issue as far as water is concerned. The, it, outside of the fact that it's dirt and the and the water is going to erode it, it's gonna continue to erode it, we need to put something there, which hence the grass and packing it back to the grade that it needs to be at. But ultimately, it would bring it back to what it was previously. which was a natural grade that goes in towards that channel, which is the same throughout that, on the north side of the road and across the front of his property. There is more of a, a gradual grade rather than just, at this point, we're just one step away from being a little bit of a drop-off at this point. Uh, it would bring it back to the slope that it's supposed to be. The reason it's actually not there anymore is just the fact that it, it is dirt.
I envision it looking like the other side of the street. And it looks to me like it used to be at the bottom of the pipe and that, that six or so inch drop is what's eroded.
Correct.
And so you would get about six inches of dirt back on, on that.
It would basically move this, it would move this grade right here across this area, ultimately making it where the water cuts through this zone, rather than hitting here against the, the edge of the road and eroding it out from underneath it, which is the reason for the issue in the first place and the reason that they don't wanna put back road onto a problematic issue.
I don't hear any more questions.
I'm with Scott, I struggle on the issue of setting a precedent. Um, especially, so on the, the recommendation here under the current approved plan to repair it, that company is saying that's a sure thing, it'll fix it, the, the road will be stable. That piece is gonna be packed in in such a way that it shouldn't erode and hopefully the grass grows and.
So yes, and that's coming from our town engineer. It's coming from half associates. Yeah, and so they're the ones who brought it forward. That, it will meet the, it will meet what is necessary in order to, to hold the road. The only thing outside of that is, is once the grass is in there, it'll be to the homeowner's responsibility to maintain it thereafter. Now, if it happens like this again, it would be because that area is not being taken care of, which I'm not saying that it's, like pointing fingers at you, but ultimately, there would be a responsibility to the homeowner, which is the same throughout the town, is to maintain that area and the grade so that the water flows appropriately and it doesn't erode in such a way that it causes issues in that area.
Okay, it's, thank you. To me, it sounds like if, if our engineer is saying that will work, it seems like the best use of funds to try what the engineer is saying. That's why we hire the engineer for the advice.
And could, could you go back over what was approved, just for the?
Uh, yeah.
Just, just to make sure everybody's clear.
I actually brought that.
I thought you might.
So the appro, the approved amount was for fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars and that includes all the milling overlay roads that were, uh, provided previously on the list. Um, that would be all of Park Lane and then the adjacent roads that abut to it. And there were a couple of more roads in it. I apologize, I don't have the rest of those streets off of hand, but all of Park Lane would be milled and overlaid and then sixteen feet, uh, sixteen feet into Shady Hill and then also the other streets that are in that area, Greenburner and so on and so forth.
Park.
So this repair that we just talked about is included in that, just to make sure that I?
Yes, so this is already an approved amount, this includes that repair, that base repair.
For the engineering of it.
Right, the fifty-three?
Are you talking about which part?
The engineering, right, or is it just the eight?
Professional engineering services, so that's the engineering piece, that's not the actual road.
And we've already had the allocated, we've already got the approved for the other part, which is the actual milling overlay of the roads, correct, yes.
I just wanted to be clear, this is not the cost of the road.
No, 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 but it does, but this does consider the actual road that we're actually talking about. And that's the reason it came forward. When they did their final study of it, that's the concern that they had. Putting the road back in that section at two forty, Shady Hill, because the fact that the, the grade wasn't being met there and putting the, milling it and then putting the road back, it would continue to slough off more and cause more additional concerns, so.
Can you go back to the page with the four options and the costs?
What, which one is it? I apologize.
The one with your four options and the price tags?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so to clarify, Mr. White has ownership of the road to halfway through the road? So we can't do any milling overlay without his approval?
No, 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 we, we as the town are responsible for the milling overlay. We, we're responsible for the roads and we're responsible for the culverts that go underneath the roads.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but he, as a property owner, he has all the way out to the center of the road as far as ownership goes.
Yeah, that's really weird.
And then the town takes the responsibility of maintaining that road and the culverts underneath that road.
Okay.
But whenever it comes down to private driveways, that doesn't fall, that's to the property owner.
Right, go to the next, the next slide, yes, that one.
This one right here? And so this would be the, so this is why I was stating earlier, I know it's separated, but ultimately, this is the price to do the, to do the work from half associates, of course. And this is the, this is the cost for them to, the site spec the area to make sure that the, uh, the elevation and grade is being met all the way down towards his driveway. If you end up putting in pipe or any kind of drainage or concrete work or stonework, whichever have you, and as well as the, uh, construction plans and so on and so forth, so.
Do you have to add both of those in?
One or the other, depending on which one.
That's what I thought you said.
It will depend on which one you end up taking on. Ultimately, go ahead.
What's, what's the difference between a channel and the storm drain? One's uncovered, the other one's covered?
Yes.
Now, could you go up that one slide to the lands construction that?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I wanted to see.
This is all inclusive in their price, so this isn't, you don't have a separation of price. This is the total of what it would cost by lands construction.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
The forty-five hundred dollars you have on the next slide.
Are you referring back to, oh, okay, yes, I apologize, yeah, this one?
That one.
Yes, sir.
You have to add it to the next slide.
Part of the fifty-three thousand dollar bid on the original one? Because they're gonna have to do that anyway.
No, this is something totally separate. You're talking about siding an entire, uh, entire natural drainage easement. We're not talking about what was already done on the road. We're talking about what they're talking about doing going through all the way through your driveway or doing the original.
I understand, but if they, uh, wanna do a compaction and regrade the side of it to, uh, uh, be able to put the road on, they aren't gonna do a grading or siding or anything to make sure that they aren't, uh, inhibiting the flow or anything else?
Only on the section that's already there, which they've already considered in that package and they've already taken a look at most of that stuff. Whenever they do it, that's inclusive of it. I confirmed it with them today, just to make sure. But yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but this is on top of that. This would be for the entire, this would be for the channel or the drainage easement that's in the private property, not the section that's actually gonna be for the base of the road. And I realize that they're gonna meet some of that grade with that dirt. They've already considered that in a part of the pricing on the other portion. But we're talking about all the way across into your property on the other side. And then depending on which one is, depending on if y'all did decide that, we're talking about anything that's daylighted, which is open to the air and the water flowing through, you would see it. It's not the full distance and they would have to, they would have to inspect and build plans out for that entire area. And then if it, if you went with storm draining, you were talking about burying the pipe, then this price right here would be for them to site that area and build plans for the full distance from drive, from the, his private drive all the way to the town's culvert that goes underneath Shady Hill.
So this is net additional?
This is additional.
Okay.
Correct.
Just to clarify, on top of the other?
And I wanna really just specify that, I know, I know I didn't include it all in one, I didn't wanna.
This is additional to the next slide, but not the previous slide.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, two different.
Just one comment about just grating it and putting grass down. You're going to be narrowing the channel coming out of that pipe. I can almost guarantee you, I'm not gonna be able to keep the grass alive there on the slope it's gonna be on. And when the water comes through there, it's gonna erode it and you're gonna be back in the same spot you are two years from now. So.
The only, the only difference I would say to that, and I totally understand where you're coming from, but you have the exact same, you have the channel in front of your house that travels water down towards the other direction and it has, it has the appropriate slope in front of it and it hasn't eroded in there. It looks really good in front of your house.
Well, it's also, uh, it's, uh, the channel has shifted, it's away from the road further than this is, it's not as deep.
Okay.
Well, it won't be as, it won't be as deep, it'll come up to the bottom of that pipe.
I'm sorry?
It's gonna come up to the bottom of the pipe, it won't be as deep.
The, the, he's speaking of the part in front of park, uh, not park, but Shady Hill that feeds in right there at the bottom. And there's a, a foot and a half difference in the, uh, elevation of the bottom of the ditch on Shady Hill versus the bottom of the ditch here.
Yeah, well, go to that two forty Shady Hill slide, so you can see the one two up.
Two up, this one?
That one. See, I pictured it across the street, see how their ditch looks?
Yeah, and it's, a lot of that is, I mean, it looks yellow here, but there is, there is more, uh, ground cover on this section.
Looking like.
Yeah, and ultimately, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm just gonna say it as candidly as possible, this is the property owner's property. Where the, the engineer is specing to repair the road and to bring it back to the grade like it's supposed to be, but it eroded slowly over time, which is every homeowner's responsibility to maintain that area in front of your home to make sure, if it does start looking like it's starting to wash out, you do need to make sure that you're maintaining that. That's something that I see throughout the town by, by quite a bit. So this isn't the only property that has this exact same issue. I've actually seen this far worse in front of other properties. It's in front of their homes and talk to the homeowners about what they need to do, but ultimately it falls to them.
Understood, understood, and sometimes homeowners need help, but I'm, I'm okay with, with giving it a shot. And if it erodes again, then we'd take a more drastic measure, but, but, uh, you know, sometimes they need help, right?
I agree.
Yeah.
Definitely not my decision, I just have to follow the rules, but I'm on board. If you decide it, that's what it is, so.
So do, we, we have the half and associates for the original road that's been approved.
That's correct.
And then we have these other bids and they have not been approved.
That's correct, yeah, they're not, they've not been, that's what they were brought forward to.
Do we have these bids to review besides what you put in your PowerPoint?
So the packet should have them, contained in it, what half associates, which I brought half associates previously forward. Uh, the lands company, that one, that one should have been in there and I apologize if it's not in there, but I can actually get that to y'all. That one is, that was what they had proposed.
So council, instead of trying to take action tonight, should we table this until we get more, the, the, the exact detail information that we require to make an informed decision?
Um, I, I'm just gonna ask, is delaying this another two weeks getting us into weather where milling overlay is gonna be a problem? I, I know that the Roads and Drainage Committee has expressed a concern about this in the past. I recall it's a bigger deal with the crack ceiling, but I don't recall comments about milling overlay. So Randall, do you have any insights into that?
Well, inclement weather is definitely gonna affect it. It's just gonna push the project back further and further. Right now, the reason we haven't done the milling overlay that we have previously cited is because of the fact that we're looking at this issue. And ultimately, how y'all depend, how y'all, depending on how y'all choose to go, will wait, will ultimately push us further and further back. So if you wait, yeah, of course, we're, we're falling into the rainy season. So it's gonna make it a lot more difficult to get what's needed in place.
Well, and another concern is, a lot of times when you put down, especially like St. Augustine, I think that's what you said was in that yard. Um, so we'd probably wanna match that, the later we go, the harder it's gonna be for that to actually settle in before the winter and like winter through. So, you know, out of respect for the homeowner, I think we should take that into consideration. Cause I don't know, if, if we push it back to say the next meeting by postponing it, um, I don't have any idea how long it would take to actually get, get that scheduled in terms of weather and that sort of thing. And I know going back to the grass and, you know, that sort of thing. So I'm just throwing that out there for consideration.
I only bring it up because we've got this one piece of paper that says, construction with twenty-one thousand, engineering costs forty-five hundred, that'd be a total of twenty-five-five.
That was supposed to be brought forward from the last one. We actually had the original quote on there and I apologize if it's not in there, it was supposed to be in there, but.
I've got the engineering milling overlay fee schedule. Is the only thing. Okay, no, they're, they're both here.
Okay.
So I think we have what we need then, which was in the packet.
Okay, I was gonna ask you what you wanted to wait on, so.
Yeah, if we've got the information.
Here you go, Scott, if you can look at it.
I, I personally like the idea of, um, putting in a drainage pipe and covering it. Number one, for safety for the drivers going with that steep ledge. And it is a deep ditch. Like I said, I have one in front of my house. It's also better for the homeowner with a flatter surface. And if he can water out to that, um, area and keep his lawn looking nice and it flows the water as it needs to be through the pipe, that's a cheaper option as well. Um, I liked it. We haven't discussed whether town takes responsibility or the homeowner, um, on this or if we could look at a collaborative effort. We do have SLFRF funds that are approved for drainage issues, so that's not taxes, um, city taxes that we collected, it's our federal government money that came in for use of these purposes. If we find it less expensive to do a safer option and a better option for the homeowner, I think that's a win-win. Just my opinion, but I think there needs to be a conversation. Since you pointed out, this is not a typical thing that the town would do and it is on homeowner's property.
I just go back to Randall's comment about establishing precedents. I mean, it's, it's, it's absolutely a great feeling to have federal government funds that we don't normally have access to, but if we start this, this carries forward. You can't, I mean, you could say, well, it's good for as long as we have these funds and then people are gonna start lining up. And I just, I really just kinda hate to go down that slippery slope. While I also respect your thoughts about the, um, the safety issue, again, it goes back to the fact that that's a homeowner's responsibility. And that, that the drainage is, the street is ours, the town's, but the drainage is yours. So if that pipe went through there, I believe since that's on your property, we would be paying for an additional expense that we typically do not.
And I hear that, um, I will tell you though, that I think the precedence has been, um, said, cause I'm a beneficiary of it. I worked with the town for our drainage issue because it was a developer's issue that created a hazard and we had extreme erosion in my ditch. And actually, the mayor and the council and our property owners, well, worked together. And it was a shared expense, but it worked out well. Now, the town's in a much better position today because of the SLFRF funds. And if we're able to help one of our own inner citizens, then I think that should be considered. And it might take postponing it to another meeting, but what's the harm?
Again, the harm is, is we delay the project and the grass won't take. So next year, the homeowner is gonna say, well, the grass didn't take, cause they got put in too late. So what have we really accomplished? So I think that we, if we have all the information we need, we should go ahead and make a decision and move on. That's just my, my thoughts.
Council, any further discussion?
Well, I guess then, so are you saying that we make a decision on which drainage issue we choose and then the homeowner is settled with that responsibility, that financial responsibility?
No, I suggest that we make an issue, a, a decision on the road and based, I, my thought, my preference is, is that we go with the recommendation from the staff, which is to, to stay with the original recommendation from the town engineer for building that up to the point where they can re-mill and overlay the road and put compacted dirt and whatever materials in there and then grass, redo the road and we're done.
So.
And, and see, again, see what happens in the next couple of years, um, to that.
Yeah.
But I think delaying it, we're just, we're putting ourselves in a, in a bigger corner in terms of actually having an opportunity for that grass to take.
And not just that, we don't want to delay the road project anymore. We, we keep delaying these road projects to where they're out of the budget year.
Yeah, the item didn't discuss the road project. It was talking about the drainage easement, so that's why I thought our conversation was. Question for you, Randall. Uh, if we move forward, of course, with the road, but the drainage issue has to come, be dealt with at another time. Is it more expensive to go back later on and deal with that? Do you see some kind of balance?
Honestly, I couldn't say, I, I don't think that it would, I, I don't see how it would cost more than it does right now. You would probably be tearing, you would probably be tearing out some of what you put in place. Maybe some of the, uh, the actual, uh, grading that you're adding there, the dirt, but that's not really, I don't see that being a major issue as far as if it, if it was a concern later on and we, it was something that we came back and we said, hey, we need to change this and we were putting this in, I mean, they would just, they would site and grade the area. It's not gonna be that drastic of a change from, from what we're looking at right now.
And we could coordinate these projects together, right? Is that, is that a goal that we could meet?
That's, that's the reason half. That's, that's the reason half associates brought it forward. At, at the end of the day, they're saying, hey, we need to fix the grading issue. We can go this route. They brought the graded, uh, they brought the wrap forward saying, hey, this is a, this is a, this is another possible permanent solution we could look at. And so I brought it forward based off of their recommendation. But at the end of the day, I did go back, even in the wake of the conversation of, uh, you know, the flagstone or the RCP, cause we have to consider all of it. I'm definitely gonna bring all those options forward.
Sure, that's what we want.
I also asked, can we go back with what was previously there whenever it was the right way, which was at the time, which was the dirt, and then put the grass back and compact the area? And he said, absolutely, we can do that. I said, is that additional cost? He said, no. It's, that would meet what you, we've already specked out for the approved, that's already been approved. And so I just have to let y'all know that option's there. Ultimately, whatever you decide to do, again, we'll, we'll proceed with whatever that is.
But what, what we're voting on tonight was in the initial packet tonight for the twenty-one thousand plus before.
Only thing that you would be really voting on is if you really wanted to do any of these as opposed to what's already been approved.
Right.
Cause we've already approved that.
We've already approved that, so you don't need to do anything.
The mill and overlay has been approved.
And isn't that a question for Mr. White then, as to whether he'd be interested in moving forward on any of these options, or just going with the original plan with the mill and overlay and however that is addressed?
Do you mean asking if he wants to pay for it, or what are you asking?
Asking his, well, it's his property. I think it's a courtesy to ask him if we just proceed with the mill and overlay and ignore this and table it for down the road.
I think we did, and you answered that question, right? You prefer the buried pipe, but you were okay with the grass, right?
Yeah, so I have a question. Uh, I'm just cautioning you. I've lived there for thirty years in a ditch.
Has it taken thirty years to erode like this? Just wondering.
No, it started running once I put them in the deep pit.
That's what happens.
So then, so then really, the recommendation, Randall, is in the packet for this evening, correct?
No, what has already been approved is in the packet.
Staff recommendation that I have to let you know is it is on private property. I recommend going with what half associates already proposed, but these are the other options if you decide to move forward.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, sir. Understandable, it's a lot of information, so.
So the, the, the half's pipe is nineteen thousand plus eight, so a total of twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand, right? Go up to the lands construction, their pipe, all in. If we go with the ADS is fifteen thousand.
The plastic, yes, fifteen. If you're going with concrete pipe, which is typically what we do in Double Oak.
Yeah, that's seventeen then.
RCP is seventeen.
Seventeen, so it's twenty-seven versus seventeen. If we wanna bury, just saying.
That's the difference between a private contractor and an engineer doing the job. I'm just gonna be clear, that, that's, yes.
And on the LNS quote, um, you may have said at the beginning, and I missed it. Do they, I know you said this is all in, but do they do engineering in the site and all that sort of stuff included in that price? Like, is it in their detailed quote, or is it just no engineering?
No, they, this is a company that actually typically installs this type of piping. They would, they would actually spec that the construction work out. And then ultimately, make sure that the drainage pitches, but it's not the same thing as what you would get with an engineer. I mean, engineer's gonna do things at a lot deeper degree, right? So, and then you have somebody who does it on a typical basis. They're gonna go out there with their own machines. They're gonna make sure to survey that area to make sure that it's daylight, to pitch downwards, so the drainage goes the appropriate way. And then ultimately, they would end up burying all the pipe. If you went with RCP, that's what that construction company's gonna do. And the engineers made it very clear, you know, that, uh, I, when I talked to him, you know, there is their price, their engineering plans, and what they do, and that's their cost. And then the, there's subcontractor that they hired to do the install part of the project, and that's that price.
Right.
Well, lands construction does all in-house, so two different things.
Yes.
So that's the reason that you get some of that cost savings. So that's the reason I proposed that. They're also the same company that installed our, uh, culvert over on Meadow Knoll. Same, same construction company.
These are turnkey, the lands end ones are turnkey.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
Compared to no additional expense.
Yes, because, one more time, this is, if I'm understanding Randall correctly, this is the property owner's responsibility, not the town's. So anything that we do is in order to do the mill and the overlay there. And anything above and beyond that, again, is the homeowner's responsibility, and if we do it, then we'll probably be doing a lot more. So we just need to, I think, keep that in mind. It's not that I don't like anybody or dislike anybody, but pretty soon, it's like, well, you did it for that person.
I'm with you.
It's never gonna end.
I'm with you, Jean, if it just wasn't a four-foot drop right there, it's the only thing.
Well, but if it's also, I mean, you yourself said it was gonna come up quite a bit. I think, I think another thing to consider is, and Connie, I hear you on the town helped you in your situation, and, um, the developer put you in a poor situation. In this case, the homeowner didn't come to us with a problem saying there was a drainage issue. This came up from redoing the road. So I also question if it would qualify for SLFRF funds, because it's not a drainage issue that started this problem. So I don't know, we would have to thoroughly research that. I don't think it qualifies for that.
And if it does, since we, there was a discussion in a recent Roads and Drainage Committee meeting that Randall had, and he brought in a consultant or engineers, I forget, um, who could actually do, based on conversations we've had here at Town Council, the possibility of looking at a drainage study for the entire town, thinking that that would be appropriate to consider based on using, or justifying using some of the hoped-for, and now we have, SLFRF funds. So again, if the Town Council would elect to undertake something like that, if this played into that, that would certainly be the time to do that, instead of doing it sort of out of scope. That is my suggestion, is go with the original plan and keep this in mind, add it to Randall's list of pot spots, if you will, and see what would, if we do elect to do a drainage study, um, see if it would fit into that.
That's a good point, because also then you could prioritize the most concerning, yeah, critical concerning drainage areas for what we have.
Just understand, there is a legal process whenever we're doing this, cause we do not own it, so we have to get, not that the owner isn't willing to, that's obvious, right? But, uh, we do have to go through a legal process, which I did talk to our town attorney on, long before we actually had the discussion. There is gonna be a process in place for us to actually even get to that juncture for us to clear it, not that it wouldn't be feasible, so you know. It's very clear and obvious, I think, that we could get clearance from the property owner to do so if you decided to.
Thank you.
I can tell you there are areas that do need improvement, not that this one's any less meaningful than others, but we do have other, uh, concerns with culverts that do need to be replaced, and that was some of the, to what Jean's speaking about, that we would use SLFRF funds to replace those existing issues, so, but, you know. Ultimately, this falls into y'all's hands. All, all I'm stating is, here's the options. You weigh them, you decide. Right now, we already have a price in place to bring the grade back to what it needs to be. Engineer clearly stated that it would meet the requirements. The only thing that the owner would be responsible for is maintaining the grass. Not any, that, that's, that's what, typically, they're saying, hey, we're leaving the spot. If the grass dies, we sign that over to you, so you have to take care of it. That's, I just have to preface with that, cause that's what it would state.
Any further discussion, council? Do we have a motion?
I move that we stay with the staff recommendation that was recommended, recommended by the engineer, which means no additional expense for the town of Double Oak for improving the drainage easement on Park Lane and Shady Hill.
I'll second.
I'd like to ask the Town Secretary, Eileen Kennedy, to please call a vote.
Mr. Wizenhun.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Ms. Shawenred.
Aye.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion, consideration, and action on the drainage easement on Park Lane at Shady Hill Lane, uh, at no additional expense, passes. Item number thirteen, discussion on agreement for fire protection services. I believe there's a presentation by Deputy Mayor Protem Chonrad, Chonrad, and there's also a, uh, an item in the, uh, packet on the contract.
So council and, um, our chief of the fire department received copies of the agreement of the fire protection services. Um, so this was again, just to update the contract between us and Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, since there hadn't been an update since two thousand nine. All council has had this agreement for about a month, and so has Chief Wizenhun, so just open to comments, considerations, um, of what was included in the contract.
Yeah, so the comments that we had given David Berman and hadn't, he didn't implement, so that's, um, I need him to go back. So I'd see home inspection services. Now, I guess I don't really have a lot of consternation about that being in the contract. Uh, I don't, I don't like being beholden to it. We do it anyway. Uh, if you guys need help, just give us a call. We help change the fire alarms that are really high up, that you can't get to, uh, need to understand how they work, um, um, uh, what you call extinguishers, things like that. Just give us a call and, and we'll, uh, uh, be happy to come out and help. So doesn't really need to be in the contract, but I guess I really don't have a, now, the, the fire alarm systems, we'll do what we can, but we're not certified installers or, or licensed to do any of that kind of stuff. So we, if you've got it going off, we know how to silence them for you, so they don't drive you crazy, but, uh, somebody's gonna have to come out and fix that for you.
Did you have an item on where it said the installation?
Uh, maintenance of home-based fire alarms.
Do you have an item number?
C.
C, one, two, C.
Two C, sorry, two C.
And Scott, that would be the same for suppression systems as well with the extra.
That's correct, that's correct. We can't fix that.
Yeah, I had a question on that point as well, cause it seemed to add a lot of things that a fire marshal would typically do, um, and, and normally like a paid service. Now, I appreciate that our fire department does come out and do a lot of these things that homeowners can handle, but, yeah, I wondered about the suppression and the, some of those.
Two D, again, no problem, uh, with that in there. Uh, we're probably the only fire department that'll come out, help you unlock your car. Other ones will just tell you to get a locksmith, uh, help you get in your house. Um, we have big axes and stuff when you get locked out. So, um, but no, we, we, we help, and, and, and usually we can figure out a way to get in without, uh, destroying anything, so we've been pretty lucky on, on a lot of those. But we, we help, uh, cat in the tree, all that stuff that, you know, if you ask Flower Mountain, those guys, they'll, they'll ask you, have you ever seen a skeleton, cat skeleton in a tree, right? They don't die up there, they'll come down eventually, but we'll, we'll go up there and get it for you.
What about horses in the mud?
Right, but the one, the one thing that does absolutely have to change is E. I, I recommend E just be removed. I had a lot of problems with the language, and we had a problems with the language. We don't, I don't wanna sound crass, but we don't really care if there's electric vehicles in the, in the, in the garage. There's a lot of, uh, stuff in there.
He doesn't have anything to do with that one.
It depends, mine, he has it?
So Mr. Berman had sent out an email.
You just said we've had it for a month.
Well, he updated it.
We haven't had it for a month. I reviewed the one that was in the packet.
I reviewed the one in the packet also, so.
Yeah, and then he sent out an email, and he asked, and I asked for it to be forwarded. So that was the one to be reviewed tonight, so I guess we should table this.
Yeah.
Since you haven't been able to review the last one.
Well, let's go ahead and discuss some of these items, because.
I'd rather you look at the most current.
But there's no, no action on this anyhow, so we can.
So let's just postpone it, and if you'd review and comment back to Mr. Berman, your comments on the contract, um, so that we could move this one along.
So you want us to comment back to Mr. Berman instead of the council? Because I, I did a whole list of comments based on the recommendation and the, including it in the packet.
So the process that we had been doing is he was redlining and sending it back to me, and we were going over things, and, and then he was sharing it with Scott for the fire department, so it'd been a process we've been doing.
And I understand that, but you two were working with Berman, the rest of us can't, because that becomes a council quorum at that point to do that. So that is where it needs to be discussed in council, is my understanding, and which is why we were doing this, cause we've tabled it many times now.
I just wanted you to be looking at the most current, so if you want to pop up your email, and you could be looking at that one, cause I did know he added in, so the letters were off when you started referencing the electric cars.
Yeah, so two C is still there.
Yep.
Two D is when I just spoke to.
Yes.
So you weren't, so what I had for E was provide the inspections.
Okay, it's two F now, he moved it to F. That's the one that we have a problem with, yes.
So do you have any issue with E that she added?
No, that's just, we'll do that.
That's just to make sure our town hall won't burn down.
But it gets to the fire suppression systems that he talked about on the prior one, so.
Do eliminate fire suppression systems?
We don't have a sprinkler system, do we?
No, 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 okay, so.
Cause I was thinking, that's like fire extinguishers, to make sure they're.
No, fire suppression systems are the sprinklers, and I don't, you don't have that. Uh, and if you did, that'd be your responsibility, town's responsibility, but we would look at the tag and make sure it was done, so.
Okay.
Um, but, so, um.
So it's okay, maybe we'll get them someday.
So F has to be struck, and the reason, I mean, again, we don't, we don't really care if there's an electric vehicle in the garage, we're gonna do a three sixty. If you got solar panels, we're gonna turn them off, we're gonna pull your breaker, um, that's to protect the firefighters inside. Uh, and then in garages, we just put copious amounts of water in there, cause, I mean, there's gas, there's kerosene, there's mineral spirits, so if there's batteries in, in electric vehicle, it's just all gonna be treated like a giant hazard anyway, so. We have no ability to, uh, register and running permitting program at the fire department, and so if you eliminated, which he did, all references to the, to the fire department running this, this becomes now a town's responsibility to, uh, register, right, register.
Say NF, it is referenced as the town.
It's, yeah, so this contract with the fire department is now putting an onus on the town to register electric vehicles, and I don't think the town's ready and set up to do that right now. So I just think we should.
Well, and how would, how would, how would people who had those know unless you went door-to-door?
And quite honestly, if you're looking at items that you think are extremely hazardous in homes when it comes to a fire, then you also need to track anybody who has oxygen canisters, helium, cause some people have those for balloons, ammunition, I mean, we could start a pretty long list.
Look, I agree. It was, coming from the perspective is, there was a new story about electric vehicles being a different animal to.
They are.
They are.
By the fire, and so having that awareness for our fire department, we keep them safer, but if.
The other thing is, the other thing is, a lot of solar panels also have the same kind of batteries, so anybody who's got solars in the same position, so.
And those batteries are just gonna have to burn themselves out is the way it works.
I mean, copious amounts of water, like Scott said, I mean, that's it.
So scratch F, and we'll land it, Jean.
And the other ones I didn't, there was nothing else.
So I did have a little bit of a concern in the way that, um, so in the prior contract, when it talks about the, the Fourth of July picnic parade and, and Santa Claus programs and stuff, so that was paired with fundraiser. And, and I know they're both still in there, but I just, I felt I was, I got a little nervous that it was removing the, the ability for the Fourth of July parade to be a fundraiser for the fire department and, in the way that I read that.
No, we can change, I mean.
Cause in the prior one, they were combined, that you could use that as a major fundraiser and those sorts of things, and it just, by separating them, I felt like it was requiring you to do the Fourth of July parade, but it may not be benefiting you.
Yeah, we can just put slash fundraiser.
Okay, that would make me feel better, just so they have that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Huge thing. Oh, I had another one, let's see if it's still in there. Um, and I, I know why you, I get why you put it, but I kinda think it should be more, the onus should be on, um, the fire department themselves instead of this contract, but in number three about the facilities, the end of that first paragraph, the use and consumption of alcohol and illegal drugs should be prohibited on the premises. And while I do, I, I know what you're getting at. The only concern I have is that wasn't in there before.
Yeah.
And we drink at the Fourth of July picnic where everybody's on the premises.
Yeah.
I, that one made me uncomfortable and I.
We'd asked actually Berman to remove that one. We, we have, we have very, 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 very strict policies and guidelines on the use of drugs and alcohol in the fire department. Responding to the calls, even intoxicated, even one drink at home, you, you are not allowed to respond to any calls. So you crack a beer, you're done for the night, okay? So this was an erroneous extra sentence and it does inhibit a lot of the Fourth of July activities that are going on. So we had asked Berman to remove that one.
Okay.
Is that agreed with all council members?
Yes, because premises, I'm assuming is more than their physical building. It's, that whole space out there that.
And you can tour it during the Fourth of July.
Exactly.
You've got a beer in your hand, I feel your vibe.
If you're looking at the auction items and it, it makes, like I said, I understand why it's there, but it, it does, it does make things messy.
Yes, and I do think that should be a part of, like you said, your requirements.
We have, we have very strict policies and guidelines at the fire department as far as uses, even, even, even prescription medicine, so.
I think. The other one I can ask Berman about, I got confused. He, there's a lot of language in the beginning of two and I don't, I can't quickly compare with the one that was in our packet to see if it's the same. But there was a lot of stuff added at the beginning for services provided and then all the A, B, C, and D and all that. And so I just need a little bit more time to look over that, because not all of that was thrown up in that first sentence before. And so it's kind of duplicative of the other stuff that's happening, so I was just trying to figure out what's going on.
When I reviewed that one though, Casey, I mean, it was, it, it's, it's stuff that we need to do. It's, it's, so I don't really have a problem with it. I mean, nobody else is gonna be able to do it, so it kind of does fall on us.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I was.
It's hard, it's hard, because we gotta keep somebody trained up to do it. But, but, and remember, we are volunteers, so all that extra stuff is just, is a burden on people.
Yeah.
But there's really nobody else that can do it, so we, we take it.
Okay.
So there's, we've got a few more edits. We've got to get back with our town attorney.
Yes, thank you for letting us talk through them, because I think it'll help for the next round, just to get through those items.
So let's get those back to the town attorney as quickly as we can, so we can turn this back around and, and start moving towards some action. That work for everybody on the council?
Yeah, and, and since there was no action, we don't need to postpone or table.
That is correct.
Can I just ask that you send your comments individually back to him, so he can put the language in there, since I didn't take specific notes on your comments?
Yes, we will. Individually, not reply all.
Right, as he.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So moving on to the next items, I had a conversation with Randall prior to the meeting tonight. So we're gonna do item number fifteen and then move to item number fourteen.
I was gonna ask you if that made more sense that way. Except for the one caveat, we would like to know, before we talk about the two, where do you stand on your licensing? That way we can make a better form of decision on both items.
That's a fair request. As far as the, so as far as plumbing, I've already taken three hundred hour courses that are required. The remainder is I have twenty-seven hours of plumbing inspection time. It requires two hundred. So that's what's being worked on now and then I can go and actually take the test.
Do you have a sense of time? Like, I mean, you don't get those jobs all the time, but do you have a sense of it's a year out, two years out, three years out?
The joy of actually getting to work with Steve Kohler is he doesn't just inspect here. So in the surrounding towns, because we are so close, he will take me to those areas that actually have more plumbing inspections, which has helped assist with that. Because quite honestly, you're absolutely right. There isn't a lot of plumbing inspection time here in the town of Double Oak. It does occur from time to time, but he is able to take me to the other surrounding areas that he does inspect and so that's where I will get my additional time. Over the next two weeks, we're set to make a schedule to try to get that implemented quicker. The focus has just been really sporadically doing the plumbing inspection portion of it, but more focused on getting the classes knocked out of the way because they absorb so much time. It took three days each week for, for quite some time and so that and juggling the stuff that's currently going on, but now it's just gonna be focused on that. And then it'll be on to prepping for the test portion of it. We're actually ahead, quite honestly, if you, because it's within a year. And so I started at the end of, end of March, early April, consider it how you will, it's quite literally the beginning of April, so we're six months in, so at this time.
What do you have after plumbing then?
After plumbing, then I'm gonna be focusing on the International Code Council. I actually already have access to the books and it'll be for the IRC and then working on the IBC, which covers the, the rest, the remainder of the stuff with framing, additional other, it's quite a bit of material, but that would be the next portion of it.
What about electrical? You gonna do electrical?
The electrical can be wrapped up in the IRC. They have a dual, they have a dual class that you can do in that, but they actually cover some of that in the IRC and the IBC. So that'll be a part of it, but there will be, there'll be another class that I will take for that, that duels up with that and mechanical. But IRC and IBC both cover those.
Okay.
International Residential Code and International Building Code. For those who don't know what acronyms I'm talking about, I apologize. So that's what that is referring to. ICC stands for the International Code Council, which is actually who I currently have taken other additional courses outside of this prior to my work here at Town of Double Oak with the city of Irving, so, and registered as a code enforcement officer licensed through the TDLR as well, so.
With the electrical, does that require hours as well, or is it the test and?
Just the test.
Okay.
That portion is just a test. So it isn't something that would require, although the experience of doing the inspection portion of it, of course. But outside of that, it's not something as intensive as the plumbing portion. The plumbing portion is what takes a lot more. They're a separate private board that operates under the state's leisure and so they have a lot more requirements. Whereas the ICC, you can do a lot of your courses through them and then you can go and take the test and then you're ready to go. You can actually go ahead and start from that point, once you have the certification. Whereas the plumbing does not. It's totally different. It's the most labor intensive, I'll say that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So, so for you to fly solo without Mr. Kohler or any other supervision, you need only to complete, to complete your plumbing license, which you got twenty-seven hours into two hundred to be completed, is that?
I can do the plumbing portion, but you're still gonna have to have the others. So that's one reason, when we've kind of had our communications, one thing that I've tried to preface is everyone needs to understand that there is additional certifications, which is the ICC. You are, you do need to have the IRC and the IBC accomplished to do the remaining parts of the inspections. You have to have certification covering that. Doesn't mean that you can't do inspections, but if I'm gonna be covering those, those need to be covered under that certification. It is not in my agreement that I entered into with the Town of Double Oak, but it is something that I know that is needed, which has been clearly stated previously that we've talked about, and something that I'm definitely gonna be working on as well.
So as we enter into a contract, either with Mr. Kohler or anything else, that we're looking at probably a year for you.
Not for the plumbing portion, but yes, beyond that. Yes, ma'am, you're correct, one hundred percent. Yeah, we're definitely gonna still need.
We'll find out in a year where you stand with the rest of the certifications being.
Yes, ma'am. And, and one of the things that, let me say this, so congruently, as I'm dealing with the plumbing, I, I want to get that out of the way is the focus, honestly, because there's other stuff that goes on in the town that has to be focused on at the exact same time. But on the, under the ICC, getting the IRC will be the first thing I do. A majority of this town is residential. The IBC would cover the commercial portion of this. It is not what we inspect most of the time. That, that's completely obvious. So the IRC would cover a major portion of what needs to be done. So that's going to be the focus for the next portion after the plumbing, so.
And you have to wait till after the plumbing is done to take the IRC?
Well, no, you can do them at the same time, but toppling all of that on top of the duties, I can tell you right now, there's quite a bit outside of just that task. So it's not impossible, but I would like to at least focus on what is needed right now, so that way I give the appropriate amount of brain power as it, as it is to this actual specific course test that I'm actually gonna be taking.
But you can do it.
I'm not saying it's impossible. Just know that I'm constantly referencing to those codes on a regular basis. It's not that we don't have them available. I have the books all the time. It's not something that I'm unfamiliar with, because I utilized them in my previous, in my previous position with the city of Irving for over a decade. And so I reference to those codes on a ongoing basis with dealing with substandard structures and many other things. So it's not something I'm not familiar with. It's just I know that right now, the focus because of the agreement is, is to make sure to knock out the plumbing and then I know what I'm going towards next, so.
So then it's.
Just to be clear.
It's, it's feasible that by the time we complete budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, there wouldn't be a need for one of these other contracts.
Going into twenty-four? Yeah, more than likely, definitely.
That there would not be a need?
For, for him to continue on.
Right.
Yeah, I could definitely see how that could be the case.
And we appreciate you sharing all that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions on that topic for Randall? Because I know that was a little bit in question. So we'll go on to item fourteen, discuss, item fifteen, which is now item fourteen, discussion, consideration, and action of SafeBilt vendor in comparison to the contract with Steve Kohler. I believe we have.
Yeah, we received a copy of it. And I had asked Randall to kind of do a comparison of what we experienced on a monthly basis of inspections and plan reviews, which was what was kind of a comparison between what Mr. Kohler provided and what SafeBilt would look to provide. So he's gonna elaborate on that. But one thing that is in the contract with Mr. Kohler is the supervision of Randall and assistance in getting him the plumbing hours and the certification experience. So that is a plus for the Kohler contract.
And we did ask that question during the presentation from SafeBilt and we did not, it was, there was not answered.
Still no answer. Yeah, that was what I was gonna ask.
I just wanted to make sure.
I actually reviewed the video today from that meeting, just to refresh my memory, and he said that it would be something that could be worked out. But it isn't in the contract.
It's not in the contract.
For review, no, excuse me, the agreement that's in our packet for, yes, the agreement that's in our packet for review was like, okay, it's an agreement.
Yes.
It's, it's not in there, so that would, we would have to ask for that.
But he also didn't provide it via email after that request. Okay.
Okay, so I, what I, what I did was, is I went over the contract that was provided from SafeBilt and it was, it was, it was a lot of information that was pertaining into it. But in some instances, some particular items were not included in there as far as their breakdown of pricing, but a majority of it was there. So one of the things that I started with is I started with the last thirty days, that what we have done in the last thirty days as far as the inspection types and the permitting. So everyone knows, I'm gonna preface with Steve Kohler's contract. Steve Kohler's contract is at roughly about fifty thousand dollars a year. So four thousand dollars a month, okay, for, for his procurement and that's all a car, all-inclusive. Plan reviews, anytime we need him to go inspect. I will state that he does beyond the hours. As the instance for this evening, we haven't, we have one that's actually occurring, actually already occurred, I should say. An electrical issue at a residence home and they had to have their power restored and so he went, he's, he's doing the inspection for that portion. So it isn't just that. It's also beyond that. But with that being said, Kohler's contract covers all of that. And on top of that, his training with me, which he added into this contract, his contract was renewed previous to my employment, but he made the corrections for this new one to make sure that that was included as a justification for some of the pricing points, because we realized that we're coming off of the fact that, as I've take on the training, there are certain things that I am doing that he is no longer doing, but then also in the wake of that, he is subsidizing under that training that he is doing with me. So his is a flat fee, so his isn't gonna be listed on here as a fee, but I'm gonna at least let you know what it costs for SafeBilt based off of their pricing points, what it would cost to do business with them as it were for the month of September, okay? So essentially, what I have placed out here is the type of inspection, the permit type that was pulled. And then essentially, the square footage will only apply to those whenever we're talking about those that are being charged per square foot. So if you see zero, please don't worry about it. Doesn't mean that they're not doing anything. And then you have the Double Oak permit cost, which is set by ordinance, okay? Those are not fluctuating costs. Those are exactly what's been, those are what are exactly in our ordinance and we can only charge according to that fee set pricing. So anything above that is what would be charged and then the public works department would ultimately, or the Town of Double Oak, I guess is a better way of saying it, would pay that bill remaining outside of that. So there's the responsibility to the residents and so here's an example. So for a pool, a basic pool going into the ground is three twenty-five. SafeBilt charges four seventy-five to do that inspection, okay? So we're looking at additional costs there. What I did put out to the side is they have a note within their clause on their contract. Inspections going out on generic inspections can cost sixty dollars at two times, at two times the rate, so a minimum of a two-hour charge, which is a hundred and twenty dollars. So sometimes they're gonna have maybe one inspection, sometimes they may have several inspections and then that clock would kind of tick in that. But there is a base charge in there according to what the contract states. You have to really look at it. It was something that I found that was within it when it came to residential.
We asked that question.
Yeah, that was in there and it really wasn't conclusive. I did reach out to them. I did not get, I, I got a response from an individual within the department. However, it was not with the gentleman who spoke the other night and they were gonna go back and look at some of the information, but they never did follow up with me on it. Because I had questions regarding that particular item, but it is listed in their contract and that was a question mark for myself.
Yes.
But I'll press on. So I just wanted to kind of preface, if you're wondering why that, why that was stated up there.
I'm a little worried because we asked the question outright.
So the other, the other additional item is patio cover and pergola arbor, one or the other, if, or if you're doing both. That could be considered. It was a fourteen by twenty-four attached patio cover that was pulled for a three hundred and thirty-six feet. Our charge, whenever it's slab and electrical, which this one was, was one seventy-five. SafeBilt charges by the fifty-four cents per square foot whenever it comes to patio cover and pergola arbor, which came out to a hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-four cents. So not drastically different, but, but just a little bit. When it came to roofing, there was not a listed item for that particular item within the, within the contract that they had provided to us. But what I did notice is I went ahead and used the adjusted rate if they had to come out at the base charge of an inspection, which with the two-hour minimum, which would be a hundred and twenty dollars, we charge eighty-five to actually do that. And that is for the, the review and then also for the, for the inspection or final inspection, Steve goes out. If they, if it's something they made an error on regarding, if they go out and do an inspection and they look and they see that there was an issue with the distance in the plumbing roof coming out through the, coming out through the actual roof itself, then he would follow up. That's a part of his package deal that he is. This is just the charge that the Town of Double Oak charges for that permit itself. But he's flat fee, so Steve's just at a flat fee. There's a lot of information, because you're comparing two different types of deals, but I just wanted to make that. So as we go through the list, they didn't have a cost for windows. I did reach out to them. I still haven't gotten an answer on that. So I did the note, cost comparison based price for the inspection was a generic that they have on there. And that was for the two-hour minimum charge at a hundred and twenty dollars. And that's because that's their drive fee, okay? The drive inspection fee is what it's called. As far as the driveway, they did not, they did not provide that either in there, in there, not even flat work. So I was actually looking for flat work to see if maybe even that was listed out. That wasn't included either. So I just did that at a base price, just as a guesstimation, at a hundred and twenty dollars. Here's where it gets fun. So whenever you're talking of residential structure, addition, addition or remodel, this one was a remodel job and the, and the remodeling they're gonna be doing is at four thousand one hundred and eighty-six feet, okay? So we're talking about eight hundred and thirty dollars is how much the Town of Double Oak charged in this. We're talking about plan reviews. This is very extensive and this is, this is when you're getting into all of the, all of the works. So, and they added a patio cover and pergola and there's, there's quite a bit going on. At the end of this, we charge eight hundred and thirty. So SafeBilt, the way that they actually charge it is based off of square footage. So there is a base price of eight hundred and ten dollars for anything from zero to fifteen hundred square feet. Well, we all know Double Oak doesn't really have really tiny houses. They have some really beautiful homes that are pretty large. And in this case, this person is deciding to remodel their house. And so in that case, it's charged at thirty-three cents for fifteen oh one and up, fifteen hundred and one square feet up to ten thousand square feet. And then they charge a whole different charge. It goes up even higher at thirty-three cents beyond that square foot. So it was eight hundred and ten dollars plus thirty-three cents for each additional square foot, which comes out. which comes out to two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars for that, for turnkey inspection. So that's all-inclusive. That's everything, they're doing all inspections as many times as it is to come out or do anything. This costs two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. So you can see we're way over double at that point. All right, so we have, here's another example. We kind of had an amazing month, so it kind of gave us a couple of things to compare it to. So this is under fifteen hundred square feet. We're at five hundred and seventy dollars for this addition and remodel, electrical, mechanical, plumbing and plan review at eight hundred and ten dollars because it is turnkey at under fifteen hundred square feet. So eight hundred and ten is what they charge, we charge five hundred and seventy. This is a generic permit that was pulled by the residents, which is actually a storage building. It should have been a storage building, but sometimes errors are made whenever they're pulling them. And so it's a storage, it's a storage building. At three hundred and sixty-four square feet, they are adding electrical to it, and it is a accessory building on skids, which ultimately means it's just sitting on like a, almost like your pier and beam foundation essentially at some point, but not concrete slab, which is a different price. So it's eighty-five dollars for the accessory building and then a hundred and fifteen for the electrical, because they are adding it, they're adding electrical from there to the breaker box at the house. The electrical permit's a hundred and fifteen, so it comes out to two hundred. They do it based off of fifty-four, fifty-four cents per square foot because it's an accessory building. And so they came out to one ninety-six fifty-six, so they were actually a little bit lower in that, in that arena based, because of the square foot. So that can fluctuate depending on how big it is. Most people don't do accessory buildings under this whenever you're pulling that permit, so that's probably about as low as it gets. There may be a couple other examples, but it's rare to see an accessory building that small in the town of Double Oaks since I've started here. Again, roofing, we're at one twenty because of that. Accessory building that we had at another property was eight hundred and ninety-six square feet. Our price is two hundred and sixty-five dollars for the accessory building. That's a slab, electrical and plumbing. So form board inspection, rebar inspection in this case, which comes out to two sixty-five. They do it based off of the square feet, like we stated earlier, if electrical and everything is included. So this just kind of goes on and on, right? Okay.
So what's the bottom line?
At the end of the day.
At the end of the day, bottom line, please.
At the end of the day, if I go down to the very bottom, this is how much we charge for the permits for the entire month, this is how much they cost.
Yeah.
Ten thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Steve Kohler costs four thousand.
So, well, okay, yeah. I, I thought, I'm just gonna make, it's just a statement, because I, I'm not a hundred percent familiar, but I thought that we aren't supposed to charge more for permits than we pay out, right? So permitting is not, like most people think, an extra tax for the town to make a little, a couple extra bucks. We, that money should be a wash. Technically, if we're doing our good job and we're doing it right, we charge you a hundred and twenty dollars and we pay a hundred and twenty dollars. And you get an inspection that guarantees that the contractor is doing the job right and is up to code, right?
Yes.
That's the way it's supposed to work. So we're obviously need to fix our ordinances. Now.
No.
Well, are you saying we're?
But, no, no, I got a caveat to that statement, because there's two things going on here. First off, if we're using Kohler at four thousand dollars and we're making more money. And then if we, once Randall takes over, then we really gotta kind of figure out what is our dollar per hour and what do you really spend on these kind of things so that we could charge the appropriate amount to the citizens of the town. So that's why it's like, it's almost gonna change like three ti, or two more times now before we can figure it out. And if Kohler's just a flat rate, I can't figure out what, how to break it up.
So if I could speak on that, because we did address this right after I got on the council. I was tasked with working with Lynn on trying to adjust the, the permit fee schedule. And Lynn did a lot of research on that of various towns, that sort of thing. And we were coming to kind of a point where we thought we were, and it wasn't, it was gonna be a little bit of an increase on each of them, just to say, look, we're covering our costs. And I think some of that is also based off of now this month, yes, so it looks like we took in a little bit more than we were paying Kohler. Other months, now he said it was a big month, so other months may not look like this. I think you'd have to take an average over the months, and I think that was historically how it's been done. When we looked at possibly redoing the ordinances, we consulted with Mr. Berman, and that was also when we were voting on the budget, working on the budget to put Randall's position in place, looking at transitioning away from Kohler to an in-house position, all that. And so his recommendation was kind of freeze until you figure this out, because like you're saying, it's, it's gonna change multiple times if not. And I will say, we did have some pushback from, I know at least one citizen who was not happy that we were considering raising the permits at all. And I think if it were to go to that, we would absolutely need to have evidence to say, here's why. We're trying to cover the town's expenses, just like in this case where Randall's saying, our permits right now would not cover the expenses if we went with SafeBilt. That would, we would have to raise the permits to cover this if we did, for sure. And it looks like we'd have to raise them quite a bit to cover it. So I don't think town would, citizens would like that. But yeah, help me out Lynn, is that kind of how you remember that whole conversation?
Pretty much, and at that time, I had taken what inspection Steve would do for every single thing and how much it would cost. And then we raised accordingly to make sure that we were making the money to pay Steve and to make sure we were paying admin fees. It wasn't a whole lot that we were raising, but we wanted to be sure we were within what we could charge for what we were paying out.
Right.
But I did give all that information to Randall.
Yep, yep, and so that is something in time we should continue to look at. Thank you Lynn, yeah, it was very helpful. She did a lot of work on that, I was very sad whenever we tabled it, because a lot of work went into that for her.
So I say that to say also, I'll, I'll put the contract up there, because there were some additional concerns that I did see within the contract, or things that just jumped out at me. I, I guess that's a better way of stating it, let me pull that up real quick. Okay, so this is, this is the, well, let me go back to the beginning, okay? So that way we have it on, okay? So this is the professional service agreement between the town of Double Oak and SafeBilt that SafeBilt has provided. It has a bunch of legal jargon in there, so I'm not gonna bore you with those details. However, I did highlight a couple of second sections that I was paying close attention to, which was the consultant access to records. Ultimately, the party, it says the parties acknowledge that this requires access to records in order for consultants to perform its obligation under the agreement, the consultant being SafeBilt. So ultimately, they would need access to our records is what they're, what they're stating. That becomes a, that, that becomes a point of contention of how we gonna, how we're gonna transition that going forward ultimately. Because at this time, when you're talking about digital or printout, both have a cost, and we're utilizing IT department, which is not under my purview. Public Works is its own separate entity. So then we're talking about something would be an additional charge, which leads into the very last of the contract, which I want to point out. Let me.
Exhibit, see?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Which this section kind of goes hand in hand with this, okay? So ultimately, what this is stating is if you decide not to go with their software, we already have a software, everyone knows that. They have worked, both, both Brian and Lynn have worked very diligently to get this software in place and with iWorks and to move it forward, and then also with Laserfish. So, you know, kudos to both of them, because it, it's quite an undertaking and there's a lot of information for everybody's property in the town of Double Oak. So saying that and prefacing all that, we pay a fee for those services. Well, at the end of the day, they have their own services within that contract. However, if we are not going to furnish, ultimately furnish them with the proprietary information and no access, then at that point, it gives you a list of one of two options. So it says, it says consultant shall provide services pursuant to the agreement under hardware and consultant standard software package, which is what they're talking about providing, unless otherwise provided below. And then it gives a breakdown, in the event that the municipality requires a consultant to utilize hardware or software specified by or provided by the municipality, consultant shall use reasonable commercial efforts to comply with the municipality's requirements. So we would be, ultimately, they would have to provide us the information on their inspections, but they would be on a different software, and we would be asking for proprietary information off of theirs and then getting that information and providing it onto our own. And then becomes the issue, the secondary issue, which is giving them access to public information that we hold. And we already know that Brian has worked very diligently on the CEGIS certifications. He could speak more to this, this is not my purview, but I can tell you that it's on lockdown for specific reasons, because there's proprietary information that's not supposed to be public, publicly accessible. And then on top of that, you would have to furnish other things outside of that. Client network accesses, internet access, proprietary or commercial software access, computer workstation and laptops, mobile devices, printers, printing services, data access, and a list of reports and outputs, which is additional cost on top of the fees that we're already talking about. So I just really, not I'm saying that they have a terrible service. I did reach out to several towns. Very early on, one of the citizens did bring forward that Justin had utilized them. So I reached out to Justin, as well as some other towns, and I wanted to share it with you. They were never talked about negatively, let me say that. They're definitely very professional, so absolutely in that arena. When, what it really comes down to is price point. Justin did utilize them two years ago. I talked to their director of their public works department, very nice gentleman. He said they used them two years ago, but ultimately, they ran into the issue that it costs more than what they were initially thought. And then by the end of it, they ended up having, they wanted to go back towards utilizing somebody within the company. Matter of fact, they have two listings on there. I actually told him, I said, do you realize TML has a listing for two positions for public works, building official? And he said, that's an error, we only are looking for one. I said, okay, just wanted to make sure that you knew that, at seventy-five thousand dollars and above. And so they're looking for in-network, the same as Double Oak is right now, okay? I also reached out to our surrounding towns as a part of the due diligence search and asked them if they've even looked at SafeBilt themselves, which they have. Copper Canyon did look at that option at one point in time, and so did Bartonville. I talked to both the town secretaries in regards to that and asked them what their thoughts were. Ultimately, it was not in the best benefit of the town as far as the expense portion, as you're kind of seeing in this regard. And Steve Kohler undercut them drastically in that arena, plus the fact that he carries a lot of knowledge and wherewithal with those towns. And so he's been around for a long time. They essentially told me this, unless, you know, of course, council or somebody else tries to go a different direction, Steve is being utilized until he retires or anything else beyond that. And so they really do enjoy utilizing him, so Steve has definitely made a huge impact and is a great guy. But I know that's not what you're wanting, not necessarily everything additional that you want to hear, but I do want to say that he's definitely grown a lot on me and, and as far as that portion of it. But I will say that he's a great guy, and he does serve those towns, and he does save them a lot of money in that arena. And so I just wanted to preface, that's the part of the search that I did with them. They did look at SafeBilt, but it was just way too much money at the end of the day. And so they decided to go with a different option, which was ultimately finding a different contractor that would do something more within reason. I do know that Bartonville did state that they are growing and that eventually they are looking at either expanding that or looking in-house possibly at some future point in time. It's something very similar to what Double Oak's doing right now, so anyways. I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Randall, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to add one more comment relating to the highlighted part there, number two. Was a little over a year ago, maybe roughly, when I was sitting out there as an audience member and the council, there was discussion and action on signing an additional contract with Datamax for additional cybersecurity based on the White House white paper. After that gas pipeline got, got hacked and the whole East Coast was kind of, you know, out of, out of gas for a while. But I, I could have the numbers wrong, but I, it sort of has burned into my brain that we, the town agreed, the town council agreed to pay sixty-seven hundred dollars for implementation of that contract and an additional five hundred and thirteen dollars a month for ongoing support, cybersecurity, that whole thing. And when I keep that in mind, we, we were doing the right thing for the right reasons. And in some respects, less is more. So when you consider letting a third party have access to pretty much all those systems, you know, a computer, you know, printers, software, data access, printers, probably a cell phone, internet, I mean, you're basically letting them in, you're opening the doors and letting them in. And it's not that I'm suggesting that they're not trustworthy, but the more people that have access to these systems, the higher the possibility, the higher the odds are that something's gonna happen. And honestly, to me, that's just like, then, then why'd we sign the additional contract with Datamax? I mean, it's like, it, to me, it's the wrong direction to go for that reason alone, just the security issue. I mean, we're town council members and we have, you know, these tablets and, and access to the internet and through wifi here and email and that's it. I mean, we don't have access to that and don't need it. So I just think keeping that in-house is really the best from a security standpoint and whatever, really the best solution, both short and long term.
So I will state this, just in defense of SafeBilt. Within the clause, it, there are options if you wanted to, but it would just take a lot more work whenever you're starting to supply paper information back and forth. The email and correspondence, which just adds additional time to it. I do know that the way we work with Steve Kohler currently is we ultimately, he has an inbox here, he comes in, he picks up and he reviews. So that information is provided to him. But just know that we're, at the end of the day, my main focus is not just the IT side, which is absolutely crucial as well, but just how much it costs. Essentially, that's what this is really about. Getting quality service, both of them are gonna offer quality service, it would appear. I don't know if SafeBilt beyond that, and no one had anything negative to say. But as far as cost, when it comes down to money, it costs a lot more. For a premium service, more than likely, but it's just, it costs twice the price, if not more in some cases, depending on how those months look, which no one can project that. We can look at some of the data information and, and see what that looks like. But I can tell you that ultimately, if you get months like these, which we do, we regularly, people in Double Oak love pools, they love adding additions, they love doing this stuff on a regular basis, which I think, I applaud them, I think that's amazing, I think that's a blessing that they're able to do that. But just know, when you start getting charged per square foot on stuff, that's when you really start getting blown out the water and you're talking about quite an expenditure, so.
Well, I, I think it was a good, it, it has been a good exercise so far. It's been very informative, I've learned a lot just like reading through their agreement and thinking about various things. So I think it's easier, it's better to make an informed decision. So you have done a lot of work on this, as have others. And I think that helps it, helps the town council come to a decision that's the best and most financially responsible for the town of Double Oak, whatever that is. But I think that's the ultimate, you know, we want to be sure that we're doing it with information and data and not emotion. That's kind of where I'm at.
Any further discussion, Council?
No, thank you for the presentation. I think you highlighted key concerns about the SafeBilt option. And we understand more about this contract with Steve Kohler and how they compare. And so I don't think there really needs to be any debate any further. Explained well, so appreciate you.
Randall, thank you.
No, it's my pleasure.
Great job.
Thank you.
And great job, Council with the questions, that's awesome.
Thank you Connie for getting the information, I know they sent it over to you and provided it to me.
You're welcome. So, I mean, we, we have the renewal of Mr. Kohler's contract.
Yes.
Coming up, so.
Do we have a motion?
So which one are we on, fourteen or fifteen? I've lost track.
We're on, what's on, fifteen, fifteen.
Okay.
The flow just was better that way.
Discussion, consideration and action of SafeBilt vendor in comparison to the contract with Steve Kohler. Do we have a motion?
I, I, I move that based on the discussion we've had and the presentation from Randall and time to look through the contract, that we renew the contract with Steve Kohler.
Is that, so I, yeah, it's confusing because of the two. So it's like. So I do have a few questions on Kohler's contract before we get to that.
Okay.
I agree like to, I agree with you, but yeah, it's confusing because of the two points.
Yeah.
Can we maybe discuss that contract and then?
Yeah, that's fine.
So really, my only real question is, because I see, yes, added the part about you getting your training, you know, being able to train along with him and all of that, which is wonderful, it's very important. The contract we signed last year was effective through November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two? So why are, was there discussion why we're bringing it up to October first on this one?
I, I'm gonna guess it was so that we could give Steve a thirty-day notice if we decided to go with an alternative vendor.
That's correct. Is that it?
Yeah, just because we're getting, we're getting close to that if we're going to make a change.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. But then technically, we, we would sign it maybe effective for November first at this point, or would we do December first, since the other one goes through November thirtieth, or?
Well, actually, it should have been October first.
Right. It took a long time to negotiate that last year.
Last year.
Yes.
Well, then the language says it automatically renewed, so.
But the, it automatically renews, but it doesn't include covering, like, um, Randall's training? The old agreement didn't include that? And it also didn't include a few things that, um, Bill Iser was doing. I noticed there were some adjustments to put that back in, that you handle primarily like the stop signs and all that, but put it in place to where Steve is required to if needed. So if you're on vacation and something happens, or you're busy with something else and something needs to be taken care of, then it would still fall to Steve. So I'm fine with that. I just didn't know how legally that overlapping happens, if it matters.
I don't know. Like, do we have to terminate?
Terminate the other one to do this one?
And do this one? But then that still puts it November first.
That would put it November first. It's actually, it goes through just, or November thirtieth, the current one.
It terminates November third, thirty days.
Right, it would terminate at the beginning, yeah.
Then that's when the other one, yeah.
Prior, I think y'all were always in October. I think something occurred and then November became all of a sudden. Typically, uh, from, based off the contracts that I looked at previously, October is always.
It was for the budget year, yeah. And last year, like I said, we, there were some negotiations back and forth that took place. And then that's when Bill's position came into play as well.
But it didn't say September thirty. I thought I looked back. I mean, we may not have approved it until November, but.
It's in the November fifteenth agenda packet, because I went back to look to compare the old with the current, and that one says it'll begin on December first through the November thirtieth. But it could be that we decided to retroactively do it, so it would pair up with the budget. I, I don't have a signed copy, so I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll go.
Right, we, we need to look at the signed copy. And, um, I think if we terminate now, we can still make the new one effective October first to keep it on the fiscal year.
Exactly.
I don't think you have a problem with that.
I think we've got a longstanding relationship with him, so if it just got discussed now.
Yeah, my proposal is we just make the motion in such a way that gives the mayor or mayor pro tem the ability to work it out, and then we can deal with it today.
I'm good with that. And then maybe just along with the lines of working that out with the town attorney, for whatever's appropriate. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what we really need to do then is, okay, I'm, I'm looking at fourteen, which is the status update, which we got, and I'm trying to understand what we need to vote on there, since it says action. But then moving on to fifteen, looks to me like that's where we make the determination whether we're gonna, whether we're gonna continue with Steve Kohler?
No, no.
Well, I mean, this part here, the action on public works contract.
Contract with Steve Kohler.
Yeah.
I think that on fourteen is what we're, this is the one that we're really, this is to put Steve's new contract in place.
Well, that, I, I, that, I'm struggling with the wording. Yes. So if that's what it is, then, okay, I just.
We can let fifteen die.
I'm struggling with that.
Just let fifteen die.
That is correct.
And move to fourteen.
And I just want, Randall, on his contract in section twelve, it says that Kohler may employ personnel and subcontractors in performance of duties and obligations, the compensation submitted by Kohler. Does this happen? I mean, do we see him hire people to help out with other things and?
Yes, he does. That he currently has another inspector that, in his, in his absence, or assists him with his inspections. So sometimes if Steve's going, gone on vacation, he does have someone that fills in for him.
Right. I asked that question when I was getting work done at my house, um, and someone else showed up, because I know Steve well, and I recognized on the video camera that was not him. Um, and I asked Lynn that question, and she said the same thing, yes, when Steve is out. And that keeps, that gives us continuity of service is what it's providing. He only did it when he was out, or if it was.
That clause just covers his additional, his additional person in the wake of his absence, if he does it. Steve normally does them, but Bill does fill in, not Bill Iser, but a different Bill, who has thirty-five years' experience with, uh, a town that's a neighboring town of ours, and he has all his certifications as well.
So it says in, also that the fees are paid by town, but paid directly to Kohler, so that that's on top of the four thousand?
No, ma'am. No, he has just one flat rate.
Right, so the language said the employees submitted to the town for compensation but shall be submitted by Kohler, indicating the identity of the person or entity providing service hereunder, and fees paid by the town shall be paid directly to Kohler.
Meaning we're not going to pay that third party instead. Steve pays them.
Out of his, out of his, alright, so there's no additional.
We have no responsibility to that part.
Yeah, I think it's just stipulating that we don't pay them directly.
That just gives him the ability to utilize him. He's just making sure that's in within the clause.
Yeah.
Okay, just clarify.
We all need a vacation, right?
No, absolutely. It's a great question, honestly. And legal jargon's so much fun.
That's why we have Berman.
Okay.
Okay, so then.
Okay, well, since I was in error, I'll withdraw the motion that I started to make on fifteen, just so that we can get back to fourteen.
Okay. Are we letting fifteen die?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to fourteen. All right. I'll try to make a motion. Make a motion that we.
You move.
Move to make a motion.
I move that we.
Renew.
Yeah, I was just trying to think. That we, we empower the mayor or mayor pro tem to renew the new contract presented in the packet and work out termination of the old contract.
I second.
We have a second. Lynn, or Eileen, please call a vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Whiston Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Schoenred?
Aye.
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
So the item is passed. We will move to have, empower the mayor, mayor pro tem, to work with Steve Kohler in regards to the contract and the terms of the contract. Did I get it half right, Scott?
Yes, that's correct. That way you can work out the dates.
Yep. All right, thank you. Item number sixteen, discussion, consideration, and action to appoint a qualified person to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor for town of Double Oak. Um, we have a citizen, Phyllis Meyerson, um, that would like to speak on the topic.
They don't fall asleep. Uh, Phyllis Meyerson, one thirty-three Eastview Court. I would like to encourage the council to appoint Mayor Mike as the interim mayor until the next election. The town is a mess, and I don't think anybody's going to argue with me on that point. I was probably one of the first people to call Mike. I know he got lots and lots of calls. Everyone in this town listens to Mike. When he gets up at a meeting, everybody stops. He's the only one that everybody will listen to. I want to know what happened to our friendly neighborhood community. We are snapping at each other, and we need to stop doing that. I used to tell people I worked with, we have to play nicely in the sandbox. And I got the biggest banks in the country to play nicely in the sandbox with each other. Mike is literally the only person that is going to be able to heal this town, and that's what we need.
Thank you. So I've got, I've got a, the, the presentation isn't really a presentation. It's really the, walking through the process that takes, um, uh, Town Attorney Berman has, has challenged me to get this right. So please bear with me, and I'm going to go slow doing it. He says most towns do not get this right. Um, we're going to at least pride ourselves in, in getting it right. So obviously, we know on August first, the council, town council voted four to zero to accept the resignation of the former mayor. When there is a single vacancy on the town council, it may be filled by appointment, which is what the town council is attempting to do this evening. Any qualified person, i.e. registered voter of Double Oak, who has resided in the town for at least the past twelve months, can be appointed to fill, can be appointed to fill a vacancy on the town council, which includes a vacant mayoral seat. Approval for appointment of new mayor, nominations, or appointments can only come from the town council members. An existing council member can be appointed to the position of mayor. If an existing council member is appointed to fill the vacant mayoral position, that council member will serve as mayor for the remainder of the mayor's term in office, which will be in the next election cycle in May of twenty twenty-three. For example, if a council member whose term in office expires in twenty-four is appointed mayor, he, she will serve as mayor until May of twenty-three and not beyond the date. He, she basically forfeits the balance of their term as council member, and would then need to run for reelection in twenty twenty-three for any vacant town position if they so chose. It should also be noted that an existing council member cannot vote on his or her appointment as mayor. We have had three citizens that have notified the town of their intent or interest in the mayor position. In the order that we received from the town, they are Cynthia Ray. I don't know if Cynthia's here this evening. Yes.
See, we drew.
Sorry, I turned off my, I have an email from her.
If you would allow me to finish. So there, there's an email out there. Um, Mike Donnelly and Patrick Johnson.
Um, she actually sent this to the entire town council, um, at six twenty-one PM today, so I don't know the rest of you have seen it, but here it is. As was noted in the Cross Timbers Gazette recently, I was glad to see that former mayor, Mike Donnelly, had put his name up for consideration for the vacant mayor seat for the town of Double Oak. I remain very interested in the town of Double Oak and would like to be of assistance in any way that I can, which of course is why I came forward and expressed my interest in the first place. However, I do not want to further dilute the nominations and your subsequent votes to fill that vacancy, so I respectfully withdraw my name for consideration or nomination. With three new town council members on a steep learning curve, the council and the town would be much better served for the experience of Mike Donnelly as the interim mayor for the remaining period. While I'm unable to be at the town council meeting this evening, I want to thank you all in advance for the time and consideration you have given me up to this point in time. Sincerely, Cynthia Ray. And I forwarded this to Eileen for her files.
So I'd like to thank Cynthia publicly for, um, her interest in the position as well as her, um, follow-up with the town. So now I'm going to walk through the process. The presiding officer of the meeting will ask for nominations from the town council. Town council members can nominate any qualified nominee, including themselves. The nominations do not require a second. Once all nominations are identified, the presiding officer will go down the list of nominees in the order nominated and ask for a motion, a second, and a vote on each nominee. Voter, votes are taken until the town council has qualified candidate with a majority vote. If a majority vote is not reached on any one nominee, the presiding officer of the meeting can move to have further discussion and possible second round of voting. If a second round of voting does not have nominee with a majority of votes, then the town council will move on to next agenda item, and the same process of appointing a new mayor would happen again at a future town council meeting. If a current town, count, excuse me, if a current council member is appointed mayor, the council would then need to appoint someone to fill the vacancy created by the council member becoming mayor. If this occurs similar to the previous comments, the appointed council member will serve out the term of the council member's time left on the council. In the event that a new mayor is chosen from someone on the town council on Monday, October third, the town council slot would be filled on the October eighteenth meeting. If a majority vote cannot be reached on an appointee of mayor pro, on an appointee, the mayor pro tem will continue to assume duties as the mayor until one is appointed or current mayor term is up. So this has all been vetted word for word with our town attorney. So I, I wanted, so this, this is why I asked for this process to go slow as we do this. So now I will be addressing the discussion and consideration and action to appoint a qualified person to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor for the town of Double Oak. Council members, are there any nominations to appoint?
Nominate Mike Donnelly.
I'll second.
There, there doesn't require a second.
I'm sorry, that's right.
We're in the nomination process. Any other nominations? Okay, uh, we will now move on to voting. So council, is there a motion on Mike Donnelly to be appointed for mayor of Double Oak?
I move to appoint Mike Donnelly as, as, to fill the mayoral vacancy for the remainder of our former mayor's term.
Second.
I'd like to ask the town secretary, Eileen Kennedy, to please call the vote.
Uh, Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Whiston Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Uh, Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Ms. Schoenred?
Abstain.
Item number eight, number fif-
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Seven.
If you hit one number, it will throw it all out. Um, sixteen, discussion, consideration, action to appoint a qualified person to fill vacancy for the mayor of town of Double Oak has been approved. Citizens of Double Oak, your new mayor is Mr. Donnelly. Would you, Mike, with Mayor Donnelly, would you please stand up?
Yeah, you did.
So the next agenda item, number seventeen, is to swear in the newly appointed mayor, Mike Donnelly. I will have the presentation by Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy.
If I could, I, uh, actually call the traveling judge with, to swear in this evening, uh, if I happen to get appointed, uh, with the light coming through, Denton County Court at Law Number Two, Judge Robert Ramirez.
Welcome, Judge. Thank you for attending this evening.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Mr. Johnson, would it be okay if, uh?
Not yet.
Judge Ramirez?
Uh, yes, he is.
Absolutely. Uh, please, if you would, if you would identify who you are and where you, where you reside?
The podium.
The podium, right around the podium would be great, so we can get the, uh, get it all on a video.
No, you're good. As the mayor stated, my name is Robert Ramirez. I'm the judge of county court at law number two for Denton County. I thank you for letting me serve for the last twelve-plus years. I am on the ballot this year, but I am unopposed. And if you don't know, the November ballots are going to be interesting this year. If you are not opposed, you do not have an opportunity to vote for us, which I think is very interesting. It's different this year, but, um, that's the way our, our election administration folks in the SOS have decided to do that. So, so be it. I'm glad for the other term. So thank you all. And I'm very honored to swear in my good friend, Mayor Mike Donnelly. So, up here? All right. Bring the microphone.
My mic's pretty much supposed to be held.
All right. Where do you, where do you want me?
So.
Here? Okay.
Are we good right here?
Are we good? All right. All right. One, one hand on the Bible, and then one. All right, very good. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I state your name.
Mike Donnelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the town of Double Oak.
Of the town of Double Oak.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the great state of Texas. So help me God.
And of the great state of Texas. So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And you have to sign off on here, saying that you did that. And I will sign off.
Sign again?
And I will sign off as the officer.
Great.
And then I'll countersign it. I'm going to put this up so that I don't lose it. I'm gonna put this up so that I don't lose it.
Congratulations. Where's your camera?
Very, very, very good. Nice job, Jerry, I appreciate it.
Do you have your thing?
I've got it in the gym. You're welcome, buddy.
Well. I want to take a moment to thank the council members. They have been doing a, a good job, and, um, I actually, while we were in Hawaii, talked with Patrick on the phone one evening, and, uh, we had a good conversation. And likewise, I, I know all of these folks, um, during my service here with the town. Uh, so I look forward to working and serving with you guys for the remaining months. And again, thank you for your, your support and your confidence, uh, in me, I appreciate it. Likewise, staff, I look forward to working with you guys again, police department, fire department, administration, and the citizens. You guys mean a lot. Thank you. Trevah, thank you, and Elizabeth, appreciate it. Alright, with that, uh, we do have two more items, I believe, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson said, and I'm gonna let him continue with the continuity of this meeting, uh, because he has his stuff down pat. So Patrick, if you wouldn't mind, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. We move on to item number, um, four, item eighteen, new business agenda. Uh, this is consideration, action on appointments of board adjustment. Uh, this presentation is by the staff.
Well, the, the applications were in your packet showing the, the who, the terms to be renewed.
So it looks like we have one, two, three, four, there is, there is five people, but four for twenty, or for, uh, for this term. Right? Phyllis, Candy. Phyllis, if you would come up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, please.
Phyllis Meyerson, one thirty-three Eastview Court. I'm up for reappointment, Candy's up, Karen's up.
Karen.
And Dick Erlock.
Yep, that's-
So there's four. We had six originally, and two of our previous board members have, um, decided they didn't wanna re, re-up. Uh, one was Curtis Glover, he said he wanted to do other things in the town. And then the other was, uh, Devin Devane Gorman, who said he's never home anymore.
Sorry, I see the mistake.
Yeah.
Donna, Donna, Donna is in the bunch for BOA, and she's on PNC, I got it, I figured it out, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So we have those, the, uh, one, two, three.
So yes, there is the four, I got it, I'm-
Four that are coming up for reappointment, and then there's still two vac- three vacancies.
Yes, but we don't have any new applications, no.
No.
Phyllis, you guys all doing a good job?
I yell at you people for not getting up, not getting up.
Yeah.
Phyllis Meyerson, one thirty-three Eastview Court. Luckily, we don't meet very often. The last meeting we had, the lady cried, but we approved it.
Okay. I, I mean, just, in, in all seriousness, I just kinda wanted to get your opinion.
Right.
Since you're in the chair, yeah.
I wanted to comment. I believe in continuity a whole lot, and me, Candy's been on longer than I have, and I'm right behind Candy, but, uh, Karen's been on a pretty long time as well, that, that the other guy who's up, I don't know him, I think he's only been on about a year. But I believe in continuity and the fact that we've all been, you know, that a number of us have been there a good long time.
And Scott, I will say, they're very thorough, they research what they need to research, and they do good talking when they're up here trying to decide.
So counsel, any further discussion on, uh, the, uh, discussion, action, and consideration and action on the appointments of the board adjustment, which would be Phyllis Meyerson, Candy Lamell, Karen Smith, and Dirk Mylinger?
Wait, I thought it was-
It was, uh, Karen Smith and, and Richard Ulrich, or Dick.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, apologize.
That's alright.
Mr. Ulrich, uh, Richard Ulrich? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, renew the terms and reappoint Phyllis Meyerson, Candy Lamell, Karen Smith, and Richard Ulrich to the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We have a second. I'd like to ask our Town Secretary, Eileen Kennedy, to please call the vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Shoenred.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizzenhut.
Aye.
The discussion, consideration, and action on appointments on Board of Adjustments, Phyllis Meyerson, Candy Lamell, Karen Smith, and Richard Ulrich have passed. Thank you very much for the work that you do and the work that you'll continue to do, and we do appreciate the consistency that you have been providing. Item number nineteen, discussion, consideration, and action on appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And who are the?
The new ones, there's Donna Gillum, uh, Bonnie Morrow, and Wayne Atkins. They're renewals. And it appears we have one application, their new person, Mr. Meyer, that would like to be on PNC.
There's, and Joanne Meyer also, right?
Joanne Meyer was up for the fiftieth birthday. Fiftieth anniversary.
Oh. There you go, I should read the whole thing.
And Thomas-
Cause Thomas is also fiftieth anniversary.
Yeah, weren't the fiftieth anniversary ones put on, he checked both. Weren't those put on hold, cause Jean had wanted to-
That was for the, I think, September twelfth meeting?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean they can't apply.
No, that's fine, I was just asking, did we, you would ask to put those on hold until you kinda figured things out?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
And-
Is Mr. Myers in the room? I don't see him.
And just, just to reiterate, so Donna Gillum is up for renewal as well, correct?
Yes, we got three renewals of one.
Three renewals, alright, and then we had, um, a Thomas Meyer that had also checked. Planning, the zoning, and committee.
We have two vacancies.
And we have two vacancies, okay.
So continuity is good, and fresh blood is good too. So I would make a motion to approve Tommy Myers to join the PNC committee, as well as reappoint, uh, Donna Gillum and Wayne Atkins as well to the PNC committees. And Bonnie Morrow, excuse me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, that's the Town Secretary, Eileen Kennedy, please call a vote.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
Mr. Wizzenhut.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Ms. Shoenred.
Aye.
Discussion, consideration, and action on appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the renewals of Donna Gillum, Wayne Atkins, Bonnie Morrow, and new member to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Tom Meyer, has been approved. We now move on to item twenty, staff announce, council and staff announcements. I do have a, uh, uh, comments that I would like to share. So, um, okay, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Alright. So I would like to thank the town citizens for the support they provided me during the past difficult two months as I held the interim mayor position for Double Oak. I would also like to thank the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem for input and support as well. Since becoming Mayor Pro Tem and temporary mayor of Double Oak, we've taken on some of the greatest challenges Double Oak has seen as a town, with the resignation of the prior mayor to do, due to SL FRF fund issue, the contentious budget season, fully funding our Double Oak Police Department, as well as setting the Double Oak property tax rate at the no new revenue rate. We have listened and delivered on what the citizens have asked. Moving forward, I could, will continue to represent the citizens that voted for me to be on the council, and will continue to move town business forward. Throughout this process, we have learned about many challenges that exist within the town. I will work diligently with the new mayor to ensure that they are all identified and addressed accordingly. We must move the town forward and not backward during the next eight months. Thank you, citizens, sincerely, Patrick Johnson, Mayor Pro Tem, Double Oak, Texas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do, um, again, I wanna thank everyone. I wanna thank Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, Sean Rad, the rest of the councils, Scott, Casey and Jean. I wanna thank our police department chief, our administration, and, um, our volunteer fire department. And, um, again, all of our citizens, people on Board of Adjustments, planning, zoning, different boards, commissions, our treasurer, people who are involved in our town, as, as Patrick and the others have been saying for these several months, uh, I see more people getting involved, and that's a good thing for our community. So again, I, I, I appreciate the confidence to sit back up here with these folks for the next few months, and, um, just thank you again to everybody, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What, any other comments from the council?
Just a reminder-
Yeah, I'm gonna hit-
I was gonna say, yeah, as long as we're hitting those, okay, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to make sure if somebody else. Um, National Night Out, October fourth, please come out tomorrow night. Uh, I had a good conversation with some of the, uh, Double Oak Police Department officers yesterday. They are pumped, they're excited, a lot of good things going on here, Chief, right now with everything you got going. Let's keep the excitement brewing. Hopefully, we'll see you all out here tomorrow night, it's five thirty PM to seven thirty PM, and I think they got some special stuff set up for them, but I'm not gonna give away any of that. Um, would like to congratulate Cody Line Webber, Lean Weber, on his eighth, eighth, I'm sorry.
Line Weber.
Line Weber, on his eighth anniversary with the Double Oak Police Department. Would also like to congratulate Rosie Rios on her third anniversary, year anniversary with the Double Oak Police Department. And congratulations to Brett Bouj- Boujwa on his eleventh anniversary with the Double Oak Police Department. I definitely would like to have everybody give them some applause. Thank you for what you've done. They're, they're great people, I've got to know them, uh, recently with everything that's gone on here, and I'm excited to work with them, and I'm excited to see them grow.
Yes, sir, um, I'm glad they, they're still with us, they stuck with us, um, they, they love this town, uh, they love what they do. I know we've had a tough year, uh, we've all, um, worked together to get through it. Look forward on getting these new officers hired and get them on board so we can go back to being normal police department and being able to go out there and train and, um, get together as a family, uh, police department family.
Thank you, Chief. Last announcement, Town Hall will be closed Monday, October tenth, twenty twenty-two for Columbus Day. Um, Town Council, is there any further business?
I would just ask, uh, the next council meeting, um, does everyone think they'll be here? Um, if you would, just let Eileen know for sure, uh, possibly we can do a new Town Council picture on that evening. Uh, so just keep that in mind, if everyone's going to be here, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further business? Counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Alright. We have a second? The meeting has adjourned at ten oh four PM. Thank you, citizens, thank you, Town Council, thank you, Town Administration.